All right. Good evening. I'm going to call this July 17th Planning Commission meeting to order. It's a very exciting meeting. We have people in the room with us, which is quite unusual. I'm not even sure what to do now. Actually, virtually most of the time, so. So let's do roll call. Hisham El Kewad.
Here.
Sayed Sepabian.
Here.
Ajay Chakpani.
Here.
John Bachman.
Here.
Sudha Sankara.
Mike Prescott.
Here.
And I am Mark Baughman, and I am here. Next, let's do approval of the agenda. Tonight, we're going to be, as you might not know, I would hope, you're excited about talking about Town Center update. Any comments on the agenda? Okay, we'll call the agenda approved. Next is approval of the minutes from our June 18th minute meeting. Anybody have any comments or corrections for the minutes from the June 18th meeting? None. So we'll call it June 18th meeting minutes approved. Next, we have what may be the center of the meeting tonight, which is public comment. So our rules are the same as City Council, since nobody usually makes public comment, other than Mary and Paul. See, I mentioned you and referenced you. So our rules are the same, three minutes per person, and please, when you make public comment, introduce yourself with who I am and that I live in Samamish and that sort of thing, for the record. So does anybody have any public comment? Debbie, go ahead.
Oh, can I do it from my chair, or do I need to be at the podium?
Yeah, it's being recorded, so microphone.
I'm Debbie Trean, and I've lived in Samamish for 15 years. Good evening, Planning Commission, and thanks for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I am disappointed in the adoption of the 4,000 option, the action alternative by the City Council Tuesday night, and I hope the Planning Commission will address the concerns raised by the 800 people who took time to turn in comments on that and the 2,000 people who signed a petition against it. To put my thoughts in a nutshell, I'm not against the development of the Town Center, but I am concerned that the city is not only granting variances to facilitate the development of the Town Center, but also spending taxpayer money to support the developer in a way I've never seen in my 30 years of working on land use. The basic reason the 4,000 units are deemed necessary is to support, sorry, yeah, the 4,000 units, is to support financial feasibility for the development, and what a boon that is for the developer. So what about the environment? The Council's often stated that multifamily is better than single family for the environment, and I understand that theory, but the reality is that there will be little or no mature trees retained in the Town Center, and unless green development standards are required for construction and transit is readily available for residents who choose to use it, the multifamily benefits won't be achieved. The Council believes that the existing stormwater regulations are strong enough to protect runoff from damaging the two salmon-bearing creeks that are impacted by Town Center, but history shows us that the developer will provide reports that show those regulations aren't feasible and then be granted variances rendering the regulations completely ineffective. There are three major actions that are not completed that need to be completed in preparation for this big, major development. First, the Urban Forest Management Plan. It needs to be updated and implemented. This isn't scheduled until at least 2026, so we don't have regulations to protect adequately our urban forest. Second, the wildlife interface included in the Critical Areas Ordinance and King County planning policies has not been implemented. The information is available on a map in the Town Center Draft SEIS and needs to be incorporated into the plan and code when you're working on that, with teeth for enforcement. And last, the Transportation Master Plan, which is referenced in the draft SEIS, needs to be updated with realistic assumptions, estimated costs, and timelines. When the plan was adopted last summer, even the City Council admitted that it was not adequate and incomplete and needed to be updated in 2025. That has not happened yet, and yet the data is still being used in the Town Center Draft SEIS, as if it's valid. I understand the limits of your ability to influence the City Council, but I hope you'll be able to address at least these three items, and don't put the Town Center horse in front of the resident's carriage. Thank you.
Thanks, Debbie. And let me say, I really appreciate everybody that makes public comment having a shirt that has their name right on it. So, all right, who's next? Go ahead.
I'm Lorraine Leo, and I've lived in Sahale for 29 years, and I'm here tonight, having never, well, I've been to one or two, well, Planning Commission meetings before, but I'm here tonight to share two of my many concerns about the potential expansion of the Town Center to 4,000 in units. And the first of those concerns has to do with public safety, evacuation planning, and gridlock. I believe that the main priority for Council members and for planners for our city, to protect our public safety. Now, I was in that long line of cars today to drop off my garbage at CWU. It took me one hour and 25 minutes to drive from the entrance to Skyline to the entrance to CWU. An hour and 25 minutes. And as I sat in that long line of cars, I imagined pretty drastic scenarios, you know, fires, whatnot, and people dying. So I ask that you, as city planners, consider improving the current emergency plan we have. I understand that our current plan, is it from 2022 or 2023, has a timeline of around four-plus hours. Well, that's really not good enough to save our lives. So please consider making significant improvements to this, rather than adding 2,000 additional units with thousands of people and thousands of cars that will make future evacuation even more difficult, even if we have a great plan. Okay, so my second concern has to do with finances. I understand that the SEIS draft isn't going to have any fiscal notes, but when I look at the proposed Town Center plan, I don't see them either. And maybe they're there, and if you can show them to me, I'd really be relieved and happy, but I could only find two numbers, two costs, a $31 million cost for water and sewer infrastructure, and that's for only 2,000 units, you know, and a $42 million cost for the 2025-2030 Transportation Improvement Project, of which only $1 million has been funded. So who's going to pay? Our city faces a looming budget deficit. Who's going to pay for this? And who's going to pay for the infrastructure costs that we are slated, although we don't know exactly what they are, to share with the developer? And revenues, where are the revenues? There are no projections. I mean, what is the revenue that we can expect from property tax, from retail? We need data, we need financial data, because we are the taxpayers. And right now, it looks like our plan is based on hope, hope that if we add 2,000 units to make 4,000, it's all just going to work out beautifully financially. But hope isn't a plan, and we really deserve those numbers, so we know what we're getting. And I thank you for your work.
Thanks, Lorraine. Who's next?
Hello, Planning Commission. I always appreciate coming with your welcoming spirit that you always have in the beginning of their meeting, so thank you for that. And I wanted to talk about, I don't know if you were at the City Council meeting, but it was very powerful, just assuming maybe you couldn't all make it, I wanted to share that the room was packed all the way to the back, and many of us were wearing green in honor of the trees and the environment that we want to protect and talk about. In addition, 92% of the people that filled out that JOT form for the city were concerned and were against the 4,000. In addition, our group that we're part of is all volunteers, save our Samamish, has a petition and over 2,000 have signed, saying they're concerned, and we know that's a small part of 60,000, but if you're to extrapolate that to the other residents that we feel we're trying to represent, that's a pretty big group of people where the majority here were not for the expansion of the Town Center. So I think one of our concerns that we're hoping that you can advise the Council on is the fact that they are our representatives, yet six out of seven of them were not listening to what the majority were trying to tell them through the JOT form and their time spent in the City Council chambers. Mr. Trean was one that was seeming to really listen, because he offered two other viable options that included talking about a wildlife corridor. Hello, we're in wildlife. Why aren't we talking about it? And also, considering the number 2,000. After Amy Lamb, second in the motion, but then everyone voted it down, he came up again with 3,000. Wow, what an option, wildlife corridor and 3,000? Why don't we study that? But for whatever reason, it was voted down. And so I think residents are concerned, and that's why we appreciate your advice to them, that we want to be listened to, because they're our representatives. And we are welcoming. I personally love how international Samamish has become. I work at a local school, and it's one of the best things about that. We welcome new people, and we are not against affordable housing, but we want the Council to use common sense. What are some other more creative ways that we can bring affordable housing to Samamish without clear-cutting, cutting down 100-year-old, healthy, legacy trees, and ruining the wildlife of over 100 acres? Well, some ideas have been adding to the Boy and Girl Scout building, changing that up, using the Park and Ride, which is already cemented, talking with the current apartments where some of them do offer affordable housing to see how can we get more, working with Habitat for Humanity and bringing another community of Habitat into our area. Let's think of other places. And I personally worry that when the developer was here, listening, speaking, and smiling at the end, that we are not supporting residents as our number-one factor in making our decisions as a city. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Who's next?
Isabel, yes, please.
Hi. I've never been to a commission meeting before. My name's Isabel Maracco. I'm a resident here for over 10 years, and I've been paying pretty much attention to what's been going on with this 4,000 proposed addition, additional units that the Council voted on the other night. I didn't come here prepared. I jotted down a few notes in the car, but I am so spitting mad that I had to say something. I don't need to go over all the rebuttal arguments that you've already heard for months from the City Council meeting, the people speaking there, from the 700-and-some-odd JOT bots. Overwhelmingly, 90-some-odd percent of them are in opposition to this plan. I don't need to reiterate all the emails that have been sent to City Council and all the people that signed a petition, a couple of thousand. You know all this. We don't have to rehash it. What I'm really upset is how the City Council totally ignored this overwhelming opposition by the residents they supposedly represent, just totally blew them off, threw them the finger, might as well. And then they go through this kind of gracious 30-day comment period, when most of the residents of the city don't even know what's going on. So you've got additional residents in this city who oppose this that don't even know what the particulars are. This is kind of like a choreographed sham. I'm really disappointed in our City Council, six of them, and our city staff, who's proposing this. And I'm hoping, and I'm imploring, that you, as good neighbors, you're all volunteers, and you've got neighbors who oppose this, that you exhibit the integrity I know you have and the respect for your neighbors, and really look over this proposal with a fine-tooth comb, because it's like Swiss cheese, some of the arguments. Thank you for listening to me.
You said Isabel, right? Thanks, Isabel. Who's next?
The next I have on the list is Jack Chambers.
Jack?
All right. My name is Jack Chambers. I did not prepare a ton of notes for today, because I presented at the meeting that was two days ago, so I've written down what numbers I still have in my head. I am a CS major at Uta Balthol, and I've made a website for examining different bike routes to the Town Center, because I thought that would be interesting to do. I found every building in Samamish and found the most optimal route to get from there all the way to the Town Center, and then I ran some numbers over, like, how long it would take to get there. And I thought it was interesting to find out some of these things. 50% of Samamish residents who are capable of cycling or using a bike in some manner, an e-bike, can get to the Town Center in 18 minutes. 90% of those who are able to ride a bike can get there in less than 30, and 100% of all residents can get there in less than 40 minutes, if they're able to ride a bike. For our high schools on 228th, all of them can get you to the Town Center in less than eight minutes. And so when I'm looking at the draft plan, I'm seeing a lot of infrastructure there that I wasn't thrilled to see exactly. We're using a lot of sharos, which I didn't define last time. It's basically the example of, but what if we removed all the bike infrastructure and you had to bike with the cars? And that's not something I love to see. I like to see more of those multi-use paths in our urban core. I'd like to see some more examples from Issaquah, where we're using cycle tracks on the side. But given I have half my time remaining, I'm going to move on to my next thing. So a lot of us have talked to you guys about the environment, but I'm no environmentalist. I can't make claims about that. A lot of us have talked about pollution. I, again, am not an environmentalist. I can't speak to anything like that. And I'm not an expert on evacuation routes. I'm not a transportation planner, even though I'd like to be. But I can tell you what my younger brother said last night when we were at the meeting. They had us some pictures of the buildings that they were going to use inside the urban core, inside the urban mix, inside the Garden Residential. And he told me, "Jack, I think we could live here. This is a place where, for the first time, we might be able to live in the city that we grew up in." Finally, the area median income, the thing that we're restricting those affordable apartments to, $2,211 a month. We can afford that. We can't afford $800,000 condos in the draft plan. We can't. I want to live in the city that I grew up in, and unless this thing passes, we will not be able to. So, thank you. I appreciate the time.
Thanks, Jack. I guess Lena's controlling the list. Who's next?
Richard Johnson.
Hello, my name is Richard Johnson. I've lived in Samamish for 40 years, in the same house. My request for you tonight is to ask good questions about this plan. It's a big change. Big changes don't go well if they aren't closely examined. And let's face it, it's been somewhat rushed. I think there's a lot to like in the action alternative that has been proposed, and I think staff has done a lot of good work under a lot of time pressure. And I want to personally apologize to Matt, because I'm overbooked, and I'm going to have to run out of here tonight, but I do promise to watch the video. And I think there's a lot to like in this latest version, what you're seeing tonight, which we haven't actually seen before. So, some examples of good questions. In the draft SEIS page, sorry, in the introduction that's on the agenda bill tonight, it talks about more parks and open space. Sounds good. We're in favor of that. If you looked at the draft SEIS, this option actually has four acres less park space, 10%, but somehow, and I'm sure this is a total coincidence, the private open space increased by four acres, so the net's the same. What's private open space? Okay, just make a guess. You got it in your mind? Okay. It includes decks, balconies, interior open spaces. So you might want to ask yourself, does this plan, as it's been described so far, meet your expectations? Affordable housing, we've been hearing a lot about affordable housing, and I hope we can all support affordable housing. Does this plan actually require or actually encourage any more affordable housing than what's on the books today? Look at the proposed code. There's no change in the proposed code. 10% mandatory affordable at the 80% level. That's all there today. How can we talk with a straight face about affordable housing, which we need, and not include that? In particular, there's nothing about the GMA required extremely low affordable housing. The City Council has been unsuccessful, but they need to keep trying to solve that problem. Numbers kind of appear out of the air sometime. In the bill that you're seeing tonight, there's a statement, "Less than 944 units are available in remaining 89 acres." I've never seen the 89 acres before. Are they talking about buildable land? Which of the three districts are they talking about? I have similar questions about traffic that I would suggest you ask about the reality of the estimates. My time's up. Thanks for your consideration.
Thanks for the Hawaiian shirt. Lena, who's next?
Jennifer Kim.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Kim, and I'm here to ask the Planning Commission to table this discussion until August, from when it was originally scheduled. The Council just voted on this, and I feel that the public needs more time for input and discussion. Given the enormity of this decision and the impact that it will have of the future of the Town Center with form-based codes and other code amendments, the SEIS should be considered very carefully. Once the additional units and the codes are changed, that is a one-way door, and that's going to change the foundation and the character of Samamish forever. A former Council member who was involved with the incorporation of Samamish told me that the city had originally planned to build four-lane roads to accommodate future traffic, but then developments started popping up everywhere and made it impossible. And when you look at how our city has grown, there really hasn't been a clear vision and a plan that adequately incorporated roads, transportation, sidewalks, schools, and other facilities for future growth. And of course, the fact that we're on a plateau with no freeway access, the city is now currently facing a crossroads. So do we double the housing in the Town Center, even though we are limited geographically and we can't add more capacity to our main arterials? Or do we keep the current plan and look at alternative ways to add affordable housing that won't further stress our current infrastructure? The Council voted on Tuesday in favor of 4,000 units, and there was talk about economic feasibility. Why are we considering the developers' economic feasibility? Shouldn't the main focus be to determine if the action plan to add the additional units can be achieved while maintaining our current level of service of transportation and our capital facilities, as is explicitly stated in the Growth Management Act, under concurrency? The SEIS shows that the additional 2,000 units will have no impact on transportation on 228th. According to the Institute of Traffic Engineers, estimates range from 20,000 to 36,000 additional daily car trips. How can that have no effect on 228th? Samamish doesn't have enough roads, schools, or funding to support 4,000 more units on 228th. Doubling these housing units with our current infrastructure is like adding another story to your house when the foundation is cracked. There were almost, as we already mentioned, there were countless JOT forms that were submitted, and we have this petition that has over 2,000 signatures. The majority of the people who came to the meeting were not allowed to speak. The public is not in favor of this decision, but the Council voted in favor of it anyway. So I am asking the Planning Commission to please deeply consider this, deeply, carefully, and to table this discussion until August to give the public more time on this crucial decision. Thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, Jennifer.
I do not have any more names on the list.
Yeah, I think there might be a couple. Go ahead. And then whoever's left will do rock, paper, scissors.
Tom Hess. I've been to this meeting before, but the reason I'm a little late, I didn't know you were going to shut down a road over there that asphalted, because I thought I'd save these spots up here and drive down to the bottom, so I had to take extra time to drive down there. Just another surprise on Samamish lately. So actually, I have a very, wow, some of the stuff that has come out already is just amazing to me. I was at the meeting where they approved taxing the utilities, and one of the things they said were, the additional units were needed for was, so we could pay our taxes, and they wouldn't keep going up. Now I'm hearing instead, we're supplementing the builder a whopping set of money, and it sounds like none of this is going to keep our taxes flat. They're only going to keep going up, because other resources are going to be slammed, like, for instance, have you ever been to our parks lately, like the Beaver Lake Park? Not so much, I don't know about Pine Lake, I hardly ever go there, but Beaver Lake Park, there's a preserve and whatever, they're always full. Like, especially this time of year, you'll drive, all the parking is full, they're all filled up. So if you're adding, and nothing surprises me, these units going in are only going to have a one-car garage. I never knew anyone who lived in the suburb who ever thought about taking a bus anywhere, because they want to do something, they want to do it now, they're going to get in their car, they're going to drive there. Every road going up and down from the plateau now, there's something weird going on. Like, when they wanted to put the stuff at Providence Point, that was going to be a major impact. If there was a school there, there was going to be certain times of the day, that whole thing is just going to be congested. So all our roads off the plateau have an issue with them, or a planned issue. The only thing I did think of from affordable housing, just to get everyone involved, was, have we looked at the strip malls that are here? Do we want to double-decker those, triple-decker those? They already exist, and they have retail underneath. Retail that has been hurting. I can tell you, I've seen a lot of retail come and go here. I've heard, we're going to do this, we're going to do that. Only certain types of retail up on the plateau have a long life. Another thing that kind of bugged me was, I think QFC over there is kind of dying. I don't know what's going to happen to them, but I kind of felt sorry for them, because I don't think they got the public, they didn't get the support from our government here on the city to actually prevent some of the theft and stuff that was going on. I was actually surprised, I went to QFC, and they had locked stuff up during part of this COVID and afterwards. I think they kind of removed it now, but I think that's impacted them. Plus, they had vandalism coming from the kids coming to the school. We just didn't seem to support them and keep that, their store used to be like the premier store up here, and now it seems more the safe way is, so they haven't been able to keep that. So we're not even supporting well the key infrastructure from retail that we have, which are grocery stores. The other thing I heard, this is the last thing, that the Swedish hospital is hurting right now. They have a budget crisis at the hospital over here, and part of it's trying to support, I believe, people just don't have enough money to, that they're getting too many. I don't know how it really works, I should never forget that. I just know they're hurting budget-wise. So, and I'm not really, affordable housing kind of bugs me a little, because I know what it took, the steps I took to get up here with my family, and my son and my daughter don't live here. My son, he went over to, is it Fairwood or Fairview, has a house over there now. So there's other places in King County. So there's other places in King County that are actually set up to take on these new people that want to get houses. So it seemed like we're adding to our tax bases, it keeps coming up, to try to do something that you really wonder. We're getting a lot of diversity here without this affordable housing. But I do believe if we look at these strip malls, you could do the double and triple dector and get the apartment complexes he's talking about without impacting and making our city center look like they're old men with bald because they have cut down all the trees. It's kind of sad because I think I had two big trees when I moved in, and now I've added probably like 15 trees to my property or more. I stopped counting. But unfortunately, oh, sorry. Oh, I still got a minute twenty, that's amazing. Well, I'll just give it to someone else. Okay, thank you for your time, you guys, appreciate it.
Thanks, Tom. Assuming Paul and Mary are left, anyone else?
Oh, I did think of one of the things. They're adding the housing where the most expensive grocery store on the plateau exists. And there's a whopping difference in the prices, so they're going to be going to these other ones? Or are they?
Good evening, planning commissioners, Paul Stickney, Simamish. Here to talk about what I've been talking about the last couple of years, which is housing that's out of balance with internal needs for those that live here and for future cycles of life. I sent in a couple of comments today, and these are in support of quantifying economic, demographic, and workforce housing types for A, B, and C housing. Then thoroughly and fairly contrast what happens if we do or don't meet all, to part, or none of those needs. Legislatively add some market rate housing in the B and C categories from 500 to 1,400 to the comp plan, and consider where that goes in Simamish, and if appropriate, does that adjust a town center alternative? A couple of what happens if we added on a citywide scale over 20 years, the 5,000 market rate housing to the 2,100 affordable housing units. Abrridged statements. City would end up with about 15 million or more revenue net per year and 185 million one-time. Residents who stay and downsize from 3,200 to 1,700 square feet would save over 35,000 a year, others more, others less. We produce about 5,000 units, mostly in centers and missing middle locations, to allow people to stay that want to stay as change happens over life. End up with roughly 1,080% AMI units, and to other people's points, I'm not sure that 30% to 50% is feasible, but it's a good idea to try. It would meet about 70% of the lowest threshold of quantified need for economic, demographic, and workforce housing. The 2007 EIS has substantial traffic capacity to add units if town center is chosen without exceeding what that plan called for, for trip generation. Land developed roughly 150 acres instead of 500 acres. And in general, the 7,100 A, B, and C houses equals about 1,800 new single-family homes, which is under a third of what's been built in Simamish since our city incorporated. All the rest is in the documents I sent, but those are some of the abridged changes that would happen. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thank you, Paul. Mary?
I'm Mary of Peter, Paul, and Mary. Good evening. My name's Mary Victor. I've lived in Simamish 25 years in the same house, and I've lived over half my life and right on the lake on the other side. I was there for a few years. I am a Washington native plant steward. In the stormwater work I did, I also worked for the Salmon. I'm part of the Kokanewer group since 2017, and I believe that we need to do the right thing for the city. I fully support putting as much density in town center as you can, and I did some charts, which I also emailed you, and I also wrote in before July 9th. You don't need to concern yourself so much about 2,000 or 4,000, which you really need to think about is in the code and the town center plan, which is part of your 1,000-page packet tonight. How do we get more of the diversity of housing, the different diverse and even smaller size units? So I just did some simple, simple math. So if you stay with the 2,000 town center, 10% affordable, you get 200 units, and then you'd have 1,800 units. A lot of people here like large, single-family homes. Those have three-car garage, three to five bedrooms, and they do generate a lot of traffic and school impacts. So you'd be about 7,400 houses adding 1,800 single-family homes. Now, I've been going into Water District and City meetings for over 10 years. 85% of Simamish is large, single-family homes. 25 or 15% is the other dwellings, the multifamily and the condominiums and stuff. And we just don't get the finances for our city's fiscal sustainability, which is why I have imbalance unless we get more houses and when we stack those in density in the centers, that is the best use of the land, less pipes, less roads. So going with 4,000 for town center, that would be 3,600 units, and you're like, oh, that's a lot. But if they're smaller, different, diverse, and diverse, it only comes out to about 1,300 units. If you don't like my numbers, maybe it's a little bit more, but it's way less than the 4,000. And then Paul Stickney just spoke, and he said, well, if you do 4,000 units, you can add 5,000 citywide because we're really missing different housing types. You'd end up with about 900 affordable housing, which is 43% of your 2,100 required affordable homes. And in order to get affordable homes, you have to allow market rate to be built and incent it to, like facility developers will build it. So that would give you, 90% of these would be 8,100 homes, and you're like, gosh, that sounds like an awful lot of homes. But it's less than half the impact of a single-family home because you just don't have everybody having a car, not everybody drives everywhere. A lot of people are single, or they don't have kids, or they don't have kids to go to school. So basically, what you want to think about is what is the housing stock that we can get in town center? How can we make it so it is more dense and compact? Because it's better for the environment, better for the trees, better for the stormwater, better for water quality, better for all the things that people are working about. You need to build town center more dense, and if you don't, you'll take away the one tool that we have for our own city's fiscal sustainability. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody else in the room? You okay? Do we have anybody online?
Nobody online.
Really? Awesome. I'm kind of surprised at that. Okay, good. So let's move on to our main topic for this evening, which is presentation and discussion about what all of you have been commenting on, which is our consideration of the proposal from the city council for the town center. And is David online to start us out, or are you going to start us, Matt?
I'm going to start us out, and then David will jump in, and then Jeff Orango from Framework, and then I have a few slides, too. Essentially, you know, the purpose of tonight's meeting is kind of reporting out, you know, the city council's decision. On Tuesday, you received pretty much the same packet that they did, and this presentation is pretty much the same as the presentation they received. So we want to be sure that you have all the information. There's no decision. This is informational only. You know, we'll certainly have discussion. Towards the end of the slide deck, there are a couple added slides for kind of next steps and, you know, speaking to the draft plan and kind of putting that in motion. So be aware of that. So with that said, I will turn it over to David, and he will begin the presentation.
Before I begin, I just want to check and see if you can hear me.
Yes.
Great. Never know these days. So Chair Baughman, Planning Commission, David Pyle, Community Development Director, thank you to Matt Branmire for the introduction. And with us this evening, we also have Audrey Starcy, our Public Works Director, in case there are any questions pertaining to the public works realm. Wanted to make sure we were aware of that as well. And so we're here this evening, as Matt said, to just give a brief overview on the preferred alternative and some of the background information on that that led to the city council's decision this past Tuesday. Next slide. So just a brief overview of some of the guiding principles that were developed early on in this project. The focus of this effort is to amend the town center plan and code to promote housing diversity and affordability. We've heard a lot about this as a community over the years. We're really working on ways to promote housing and try to provide additional opportunities for people who want to downsize, who might want to move back to the city, who might want to move to the city to be able to do so. In order to assist in that, we are looking at regulatory streamlining. The state legislature recently passed a bill that identified that one of the reasons why housing is expensive, it takes a long time to build, is because of the permit process that goes along with it. So as part of this work, we're looking at the city's town center entitlement permit process, construction permit process, and building permit process, which can, if you stack it end to end, take many years. I think that's also an important point to keep in mind when we think about how the town center might build out over time, is that development takes a long time to get moving. In town center, you know, we typically see it takes around five years of entitlement permitting to get to the point where somebody's actually building a building, and even more time until people are moving in. So development doesn't happen overnight, and if we move forward with 4,000 units in the town center plan and code, we're not necessarily going to see 4,000 units appear overnight. It likely will take decades for that to build out. Another objective of this effort is to improve mobility and street design, make network improvements. The current town center plan has a visionary street network that is unattainable. It shows roads being built across large ravines that would require bridge construction. It shows roads being built in areas of steep slopes that would require very difficult cutting and buttressing of roads in order to make it work. Generally speaking, it is one of the barriers that we see as the biggest barriers to the town center developing is the infrastructure plans about how the infrastructure would build out within the town center. So part of this effort is looking at how can we modify the plan itself to simplify the infrastructure, lower the cost of it, and ensure that it's actually built in a meaningful way and that provides network alternatives and improvements to how people get around the town center and within the city. Another part of this is community identity regarding public spaces and amenities. One thing we heard as part of our visioning work that we did years ago is related to the need that people have to have somewhere to connect. They want to have a place to go that serves kind of as the city's front porch, if you will. It's, you know, a place they can go meet somebody to have a glass of wine on an outdoor patio, additional indoor spaces in the winter where there might be some retail opportunities or some places like, you know, frozen yogurt shop or something, I guess, in the summer, maybe not that in the winter, but, you know, places for people to gather. And finally, environmental stewardship. We've heard a lot about this in the comments. You know, there is no proposal to change how the city's critical areas rules apply. There is no proposal to modify the city's stormwater regulations as part of this proposal. Rather, what we're talking about is the environmental stewardship that comes with development in the form of a center. It is widely known that development in centers is seen to be as a more environmentally sensitive form of development as opposed to sprawl. Simply think about the number of acres it would take to replicate 4,000 units in a single-family residential format, even in the form of townhomes, and the number of trees that come down as a result of that, and the number of acres of impervious surface that become of that because it's a lower, lower-density sprawling type of development. So although, yes, there would be trees being removed in the town center, and there already are proposed to be trees being removed in the town center as part of the current plan that was put in place in 2007, that, you know, we're not talking about proposing to remove any more trees than what is already in the current plan. Instead, we're looking at ways to increase density and to allow for some additional building types that might be able to be stacked and taller, which allows for additional density. Next slide. So what is the issue and what is the assignment given? As I said already, housing options in Simamish are lacking. We have a housing issue. It's not unique to Simamish. It's across the region, across the country, and largely around the world, that we're hearing a lot about the cost of housing. In October of 2023, at the Joint Planning Commission-City Council meeting, we were tasked with finding ways to promote and accelerate diverse and affordable housing in the town center. Since then, we have been working on reviewing the plan and code and working on developing a draft environmental impact statement, which has all recently been published, and we've received comments on it, we'll get to that here in a minute. The focus of this effort really is on making mixed-use, mid-rise, and low-rise construction types feasible. The challenge is, is that if these are not considered to be financially viable, they're infeasible to developers, they're not going to build them. Instead, our town center will continue to be built out with townhomes, which do play a role. However, townhomes themselves don't provide the type of housing that is needed in order to fill the gap that Simamish has. And again, you know, playing on that, that the supportive density, the density needed to support that type of housing is currently not there in the town center. And, you know, following up on that, without adequate density amenities like open space, parks, trails, restaurants, and desired street configurations will not materialize. And what this means is that unless there is a financially viable path for a developer to build the product the city wants, that will not happen. Instead, we will end up with a different product, one that is allowed by the current code and current plan, and that will not include all of the things that we want. So what we're trying to do is strike a balance between density, amenities, and what is considered to be viable by a developer. And yes, that is a business, and yes, they do seek to make a profit. That is, that is one of the components of market-built housing. So what we're doing is working on trying to find that balance of how much density is needed to attain the vision that we want in the city's town center. Next slide. And, you know, another important factor of this is that the town center plan has been in place for quite some time, and we just really haven't seen development take off in the town center. Those developments that have occurred, whether it's the TRF met-market developments, Sky Apartments, the Ichijou townhomes, have been built in locations that did not require a lot of infrastructure. Those were able to be built out in a manner that didn't require new roads to be built, that didn't require a lot of frontage improvements to be built. So those largely were not required to make the investments that a lot of the balance of town center needs to make in order to deliver the product that the city wants. Consequently, we haven't really seen a lot more be built in the town center, and, you know, to some people, maybe that's okay. But for those of us who are tasked with trying to promote housing and housing in typology, building typologies that is considered affordable, that's a problem and a challenge for us. Next slide. So where are we in the process? You know, as I said previously, we've completed background study, coded plan review, stakeholder engagement, scoping, and we've pushed out a draft supplemental environmental impact statement and a draft plan and draft code. We closed the comment period that is the state mandated or required comment period on an environmental impact statement. Keep in mind that an environmental impact statement is something that is driven by state law requirements. When I say a required state law comment period, it's because that is a legal process and we are following it. It is a disclosure document, it is not a decision. It is something that is meant to guide decision-makers and help inform work being done to craft code amendments, et cetera. The draft plan and code were issued, and comments are still being collected. I want to stress that comments will continue to be collected on the draft plan and code until legislative action is taken, that this is not a that this is not a closed deal by any means until legislative action is taken. And we hope that people continue to be involved and ask questions and make comments. Really appreciate when things are highlighted that, you know, it's a large document, and sometimes there are nuances or things written in there that we might have seen that we meant to go back to or that maybe we just didn't see, and we really appreciate it when the public and the planning commission and others provide feedback to help us refine and improve the plan. Finally, the selection of the alternative was made on the 15th, just two days ago. The city council passed a resolution directing us to continue with the preferred alternative or the action alternative. And again, this doesn't mean that 4,000 units ultimately will be built, but what it does is it gives us the flexibility to continue to study that and to understand what the impacts might be with the plan update related to 4,000 units. Now, coming up on the horizon, there are a few steps. There's the final supplemental environmental impact statement, and we are going to be working on that over the summer and into the fall. That usually is an integrated document with the final plan that is considered so that the commission and the council will get to see the final environmental impact statement alongside the issuance of the final proposed draft plan, and they can make any changes needed to the draft plan based on information presented in the final environmental impact statement and based on public comment received regarding the plan. Finally, we anticipate the code to follow shortly after that, and that will be worked on primarily in the fall and winter. It could move into 2026, really depends on the pace that we get through this work. It's quite complicated, and we do want to make sure we get it right. I think, so finally, just wanted to go over the planning context. And this is one I think that is really important. It's kind of the, you know, a lot of the, I want to say, pressures that we're facing come from state, regional, and county planning. These efforts, or excuse me, the state mandates and updates to county planning policies have really stressed that cities have a role in delivering diverse and affordable housing. These changes really stress the importance of mid-rise construction, that the state sees that mid-rise construction is really where affordability takes place. So we are in following that guidance, working on trying to find again a way to promote mid-rise construction in the town center. City's adopted vision statement highlights a desire for a thriving town center. You can see this in the adopted vision strategies that were adopted under Resolution 2023-1001. You can see them, they're presented here, specifically item number eight, build a thriving town center. And this is what we're working on. We're following up with our direction we received from the adopted vision statement and from the city's adopted revised, updated town center, excuse me, updated comprehensive plan that was updated in December of 2024 through ordinance 2024-577. The city has also been assigned an affordable housing allocation, and the planning commission knows because you've been through this whole comprehensive plan update process that there's a difference between housing capacity, a growth target, and a housing allocation. And what this effort is, is really trying to increase the capacity in the town center. We're not proposing to change the city's growth target. In fact, we don't anticipate that growth in the town center will really take off in the short term. We're really trying to make this long-term investment in the change of the plan. You know, the development industry or the development world will need to respond to the plan change and code change, and it will take them some time to bring projects to the surface where they are actually submitting entitlement permits, construction permits, and building permits. There are new reporting and accountability requirements. Specifically, there was a new bill that was passed by the legislature this spring, SB 5148. If you haven't had a chance to read it, suggest taking a look at it. This one updated the Growth Management Act elements of the Washington Administrative Code and Revised Code of Washington 2. I can't remember, I think it was the WAC that it updated. Excuse me, RCW 3678 was what it updated. And that added a allowance for the state to select a city's housing element that it felt was not performing properly and to call it to review. And the state then, if the state makes a finding that a city is not delivering the type of housing that it needs to or that it was assigned to deliver as part of its housing allocation, that the state can then implement reasonable measures and require the city to make adjustments to its comprehensive plan housing element and its development regulations. And as far as we're aware, it also allows the state to, the city refuses to do that to supersede a city's comprehensive plan housing element and the city's development regulations in order to allow the type of housing that is needed to promote housing diversity and affordability. So there is now a new reporting and accountability format that the state is using, and we're going to watch how this plays out. The city currently is compliant, and we don't think we have a problem with our compliance today. However, down the line, if we see areas that are slated for or zoned for mid-rise be built out with townhomes, that does present a challenge for the city because the city's capacity for mid-rise typologies is displaced by townhomes. So that is one of the challenges with this project, is that we are trying to find ways for the areas in the city that are actually zoned for mid-rise to be built with mid-rise instead of townhomes. Because as townhomes continue to infill in areas that could be built by mid-rise, that opportunity is displaced by those townhomes, if that makes sense. So I'll turn it over now to Matt, I think, for the draft supplemental EIS overview, possibly Jeff.
This is actually Jeff is next.
Great, thank you, David. Good evening, planning commissioners, members of the community. Jeff Ferrango with Framework, and I'm going to go over the draft supplemental EIS. So since this is a supplemental EIS, in order to understand the full scope of the environmental analysis, it would require the combination of the two documents. And under a supplemental EIS, there is not a requirement to do scoping. However, the city opted into the scoping process last year. And as part of the scoping process, and this is guidance from the State Department of Ecology in what's called the SEPA handbook, is to only focus on those elements of the environment that are likely to have potential impacts. An SEIS document is supposed to be concise and focused, and understand that that is sometimes challenging to do so. And we have attempted to keep it as concise as possible, but still have gone over what they identify as a typical length for an SEIS for, I think, a number of reasons. So during the scoping process, we do consider things like infrastructure, sewer water availability, school capacity, and based on that, those were not included in the specific topics because they had been adequately screened during that scoping process. So just wanted to clarify that those were fully considered, and we have been coordinating with outside public agencies regarding this. Next slide, please. So the two alternatives, the no-action alternative and the action alternative under SEPA are really meant to be bookends for the purposes of environmental analysis. They're not supposed to, they're supposed to represent potential outcomes, but they're not necessarily intended to predict the future. And there are a number of range of outcomes that can happen in the various proposed zoning districts and at the parcel level, and I'll talk about that a little bit more. So the no-action alternative essentially keeps the current plan in place, the current code in place, and the current incentives in place, which have been exhausted, which is one of the main impediments to affordable housing moving forward. The action alternative is similar to one of the action alternatives in the original SEIS, and it studies up to 4,000 units. The land use plan, based on an updated model, land use model that we used in the comp plan, could theoretically accommodate 4,000 units, but the actual build-out could be quite less. For example, in one of the proposed districts, the garden or the urban mix, there's quite a range of outcomes that could happen. There could be commercial development with no residential. There could be townhomes, or there could be low-rise or low-scale mid-rise development. Those have vastly different outcomes in terms of numbers of units. And so the 4,000 is really a threshold for which we wanted to study. The new form-based code helps with some of the regulatory streamlining, and all of the code updates are intended to produce better outcomes that align with the town center plan. As we've shown earlier in David's chart that he presented, even though town center is supposed to be the city's growth center, we've seen close to 4,000 units built over the period of time since the town center plan was adopted outside of town center and in the residential districts. The new permit processes will reduce complexity and administrative costs and will make projects feasible for smaller developers. This project will be implemented by a number of property owners and developers. Even though there is one major developer, there are many other actors. And in particular, the small property owners have had challenges moving forward with development due to the complexity in the code. The action alternative also includes the new streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes to support density, and many of those features are also included in the no-action. However, because of the feasibility challenges and the requirement for private developers to build those new streets, sidewalks, and bike lanes, those have not been able to move forward in large part. Next slide. So in terms of looking at the potential impacts under the no-action, you know, under land use, we have fragmented zoning and low-allocated residential densities. It was envisioning sort of three or four different nodes of intense development in the A1. We consolidated that in one area, and in some cases, we've actually reduced the development intensity in terms of building high on some parcels in the town center. We've increased them in others. Commercial development is also challenged by fragmentation and some of the allocations and where commercial development was envisioned. For example, the Sammamish Village project, the Met Market, was not envisioned to be a commercial development in the original plan, but because of proximity to 228th visibility and access, having a large parcel that they could develop mixed-use and do a mid-rise apartment building and not have to build the infrastructure as David described, I think we're largely resulting in that project being feasible. Under the no-action, there's one failing intersection, and that's the same only intersection that fails under the action as well. So that's under the no-action assumptions around growth and development. And there's a, it's a two-way stop intersection, so there's a number of potential mitigation measures that could address that, such as roundabouts and other approaches. Probably the most significant potential impact of the no-action is the underproduction of housing and affordable housing. We heard a lot during the comprehensive plan about the need for different types of units, particularly for existing residents, to be able to stay in the community. And we hear that frequently in other communities around Puget Sound as well. Many stories of folks having to leave the community that they have attachments to because they can't find the type of housing that they need. So that's, I think, one of the main drivers here. Market conditions combined with the limits on density, which in some cases is less than what's allowed in other parts of the city, and even including the R zones due to the middle housing bill, which was recently implemented. As David said, there's no requirement to make this change in terms of complying with the comprehensive plan, but that is an ongoing conversation, and results are going to matter. So even though we've done the planning for the 2,100 units, and most of that is affordable housing, if we don't see that result, they're going to start, you know, wondering why that is the case and could result in some potential compliance issues for the city down the road. Again, understanding that there is some uncertainty around how this process will play out because many of these laws are entirely new and have not been fully invented. And then finally, on the market, primarily on the market housing side, the existing code exhibits the type of housing and the associated amenities that are needed. Next slide. So the action alternative on the land use side preserves the wedding cake concept, which has lower intensity at the edges. Those edges in the R zones have been implemented with middle housing, so there is some higher compatibility between those zones as well. The form-based code and revised incentives will enable more diverse and feasible housing types. We are still working through the affordable housing requirements, but there was a comment during public comment that we're proposing to keep that the same. There are a range of alternatives we're looking at in the draft code, and many of those have much higher requirements for affordable housing. We're looking at the percentage that's required and also the AMI-adjusted area median income bands that those units would be affordable to. Includes a streamlined administrative process, and then the intention of the land use plan is to support increased transit use again over time. Housing, we get a greater mix of housing types and a wider range, updated incentives to bolster affordable housing production. And then we studied the impacts up to 4,000 units. The transportation network, there are some enhancements as well as part of the action alternative. And some of these things are, you know, admittedly interchangeable, so I don't want to emphasize them too much. But some things like the green spine, which is another major element of the existing plan that has not moved forward in large part, could be reimagined, for example, as more of a transportation corridor with those green elements to keep the concept of the green spine. So those are some of the things that we continue to work through. Next slide. So we've had some questions about the alternatives and where we get these numbers from. And I guess the first thing I'd like to say is under the State Environmental Policy Act, project-specific development projects can be reviewed under it and require an EIS in some cases. And then it's also applied to planning projects. So if this was applied to a master plan project, when you look at the numbers for commercial development, open space, housing units, that's all going to be prescriptive based on what's proposed in the development, and you know what that's going to be. They could provide some range. For a planning project, you're really looking at a reasonable set of assumptions for something that you want to study. And then in the future, depending on how the city has their exemptions and things set up, there will be additional environmental review at some point when thresholds are exceeded. We also have the scenarios that were looked at in the original EIS, and some of those have been modified a bit, but the action alternative is largely the 4,000-unit alternative. That was the original EIS. We're showing the total housing units as a range between 3,000 and 4,000, and then we, I think, added some, changed some of the unit types slightly. And then some projects have also been proposed or in some various stages of the permit process. So there was a comment earlier about four acres of private open space, and that's because I believe the townhouse projects moving forward now have private open space associated with them. So it was simply documenting a condition that's being built out now. So again, this is not a predictor of the future. It's a reasonable assumption and something that could play out under the proposed zoning schemes under both of these alternatives. But there's a fairly, again, wide range of outcomes that could actually happen. And some of those factors are outside of the city's control, things like interest rates, construction costs, you know, global economy, economic issues, so on and so forth. Next slide, please. So transportation was obviously a key part of the SEIS and one of the primary drivers for conducting the supplemental impact statement. And our responsibility at Framework was to provide the land use inputs similar to what we did during the comprehensive plan and based on distributing the 4,000 units. There is the proposed road network, which is shown here and includes many new streets. And so that has been factored into the analysis here. And the average delay under the action alternative, average additional delay, is 1.4 seconds. And I know there's some additional questions, and we're happy to answer those later in the meeting. Next slide. On the land use side, the current map is there in the middle, and you can see that it envisioned kind of four nodes, shown as A1 through A4. For various reasons and feasibility issues, those have not moved forward. So we're proposing to consolidate that, and that is the zone that allows the tallest building heights of 70 feet. So east of 228th, it will be somewhat lower scale under the proposed zoning. The green area on the proposed map is the garden, or sorry, the urban mix that allows heights up to 50 feet and a wide range of land uses and housing types. And then the blue, lighter blue area is the middle housing zone, similar to what we've implemented in the R zones in the city. We think the proposed map kind of respects the wedding cake concept from the original plan, which is to have a denser core and a less intense which is to have a denser core and a less intense development at the edges, reduces administrative complexity and helps to deliver the outcomes envisioned in the plan. Next slide. So we tried to maintain the similar scale of development. There is the potential to go up to 85 feet potentially through some incentives. We use the example of a mass timber building. There's an example of one in Seattle, an affordable housing project that is a mass timber building. And of course, there's lots of other examples. So that would be incentive-based to deliver public benefits. The 70-foot that would be allowed under the form-based code is what's allowed today. So the Sky Apartments, if you're looking for an example of a building that exists in Town Center today, that would be of a similar scale. It's just that, under the current code, they had to use a lot of land to be able to get the density to build that building, including the land under the rest of the shopping center in Met Market there. The urban mixed is similar to the existing B-zone, would allow development up to 550 feet or four to five stories, depending on if they had a first-floor commercial use, which tends to have a taller floor height. But this zone would also allow middle housing. So again, the density outcomes could be very different, and that will have an impact as to whether the 4,000 units are even ever achieved or we get something potentially much less than that. And then the garden mixed, again, is a middle housing district, allows things like townhouses, duplexes, triplexes. And we are eliminating single-family home as a permitted use as well.
Thank you, Jeff. To continue, I'm going to go over the comments that we received and some of our findings, you know, through the draft SEIS process, which is, you know, it's a work in progress, and we're continuing to work on it. I think you heard that we received almost 800 responses. I think it was 791 total responses. Through that 30-day comment period, I think it was 705 unique commenters. So you had several people who commented more than once and that sort of thing. So out of that, almost half were, you know, concerned about traffic. And in the draft SEIS, we found that there were no significant adverse unavoidable impacts. I think that's a legal phrasing that they use under the action alternative. As David and Jeff both mentioned, the plan includes, you know, investments in the local street grids, intersection improvements, expanded sidewalks, bike lanes, you know, kind of all of these things, which, most of which will be built by the developer. That will be borne, that cost will be borne by the developer. We did find the one intersection, that Southeast 8th and 212th, would fail, but that fails under both the action and the no-action alternatives. And it can be mitigated. As Jeff mentioned, it's a two-way stop. You know, there could be a roundabout, there could be a signal, there could be a lane added. That, you know, there's all kinds of ways that that could be mitigated. There is a transportation future conditions memo attached to the SEIS where you can see they evaluated, I think, over 50 intersections and looked at different, you know, examples of the street network that would come into play. That's also a work in progress, so I think we're going to add more to that. I think there were questions about the assumptions and kind of how the model works, and I think we want to add that to that memo. And then additionally, every project, you know, at the permit stage is evaluated for concurrency, and we enforce those requirements. So essentially, if we're reviewing a project for permit and we find as a result of that project, you know, intersection fails, that would have to be addressed through that process. 41% of the respondents mentioned the number of housing units or overall density. I did want to note that, you know, through the middle housing overlay, that much of the city allows densities of 12 to 18 units per acre. Under the no-action alternative, overall density is 12.7 units per acre. And you contrast that with the action alternative, which is 25.5 units per acre. So that's taking the 240 acres and then subtracting out the critical areas, which I think are 83. That leaves 157 acres left. And so you just do the math of the 2,000 divided by 157, 4,000 divided by 157. And that's what you, that's the result. 41% also, 320 comments, mentioned concerns about infrastructure. So we did not find any indication that infrastructure is an issue. It's another item that we're continuing to work on. But as far as we've heard, water, sewer, you know, and then also the traffic infrastructure as well are not an issue. It's installed essentially as development occurs, and that's a matter of need. It's installed when it's needed. And then here again, as I mentioned in, you know, the transportation section, that's also, that's further evaluated at the time of permit, during that permit review stage. 28% of the respondents mentioned school capacity, concerns about, you know, overcrowding of schools. And, you know, we work closely with the Lake Washington School District. They have an enrollment forecast memo, and they are regularly updating kind of their, they're trying to project their enrollment for future years. You know, they do an annual capital facilities plan that coincides with their impact fees. But in that memo, it shows that there will be a 15% decline in enrollment from 2028 to 2035. And that's about as far as they can forecast out. So keep that in mind, this idea that, you know, right now, in the next couple of years, enrollment is increasing, but thereafter, it starts to drop. And we looked at the local schools, the local Sammamish schools, and had the same findings. And we will continue to collaborate with the school district and ensure, you know, we provide them with our development data. We provide them with our permit data. We provide them with these plans and to make sure that their enrollment forecasts are accurate. 19% of the respondents mentioned environmental impact. We did a study in 2023 while we hired a consultant to do a study to evaluate the kind of the hydrology of the Town Center watershed and outlying watershed and found that, you know, through Town Center development and essentially through managing stormwater through new facilities, that stormwater drainage will actually improve through these new facilities. We found that, you know, the critical area regulations that are going to protect 83 acres, those remain in place, and those are not, we're not proposing to change those. And that 83 acres is one-third of the entire Town Center. You put it in that context. There are landscape regulations that are proposed in the new code. It's called the eco-factor, and that emphasizes drought-resistant and native species. And then we're also, we have a placeholder in the draft code for green building incentives. And that's something that we're slated to evaluate next year. And that could involve, you know, solar requirements or green roofs and, you know, water reclamation and kind of those types of projects. Then lastly, 16% commented with concerns about emergency services and particularly wildfire evacuation. And we pointed to the 2022 evacuation study. And then there's also the 2023 Emergency Management Plan, which was adopted by the city. Overall, the city can be evacuated in four hours, 40 minutes. And we will have ongoing coordination with the East Side Fire District and other public safety partners. There were other comments, probably, I don't know, five or six other categories that kind of fell below kind of the 10% threshold. We will be reporting those out as well. I just wanted to provide you with an overview of what the main comments were. And then with that, we will move on to the draft plan overview, and I think Jeff is going to speak to this.
Great, thanks, Matt. So commissioners, we presented to you, I believe, on June 18th, an intro to the plan. And so we're just going to provide a bit of a refresher. We're planning to send some materials out for review, and we thought this would be helpful to get some more pointed comments from the commission on the draft plan. So the outline you see before you is largely from the existing plan. And, you know, one of the things to point out, when the Town Center Plan was originally put together, you know, the city didn't have as strong of a comprehensive plan. And so it was, I think, used to develop a policy direction that typically would be included in the comprehensive plan. Now that the city has a new comprehensive plan that addresses a number of those issues, there could be some opportunities to kind of streamline this going forward. But with that said, these are the topics that are covered and addressed in the plan. Next slide. So again, these are the updated zoning districts. We have the three districts, the one kind of central node centered along 4th and 228th. Then the lower-scale districts, including the urban mixed and then the garden mixed further out from there. Next slide. The form-based code is really about focusing more on the qualitative aspects of development and the experiential qualities rather than what's necessarily in the building, such as the numbers of units or the specific use of that, as long as it can fit the form. So it includes a number of elements. It includes standards for new streets, including sidewalks, bike facilities, on-street parking, lane whiffs. And we've been coordinating that with East Side Fire and Rescue. And then it includes prescriptive standards for things like setbacks, depending on whether it's residential at the ground floor or it's a commercial use, can accommodate things like outdoor seating and amenities. And one of the things that we're excited to implement is called the eco-factor, and it will give credit for putting trees and landscape and green infrastructure into the public realm, which will, I think, help further the city's sustainability goals. Next slide. This is the transect of the different zones, going from a max with incentives of 85 feet, which is kind of the ceiling of mid-rise construction, down to middle housing types in the garden mixed district with some mid-rise types allowed in the middle part of it. And again, some of the districts do allow quite a range of development outcomes, of which, of course, we don't have a perfect crystal ball, but studying reasonable outcomes in the SEIS is the appropriate way to address that. Next slide. So in a form-based code, there's another kind of element which combines the land use map and the street types. It's called a regulating plan. And so some of these designations include concept plans for that type of street. We've included, in many cases, a range of bike facility types. I appreciated the comment earlier during public comment about the use of sharrows. I definitely agree with that, and we would only use them sparingly on streets that are very low volume and low speed. We are looking at some shared-use paths and more like high-quality, low-stress protective facilities. We have a meeting coming up to coordinate with Audrey and her team here soon to start to move this forward. But this will hopefully help to deliver some of those amenities and walkability that I think the community is looking for in Town Center. Next slide. Town Square, also a key element. Town Squares can take various forms, but it is really about creating a central community gathering space. The upper example is a local example. It's more of a hardscape plaza, but it does have a small community-based retail building with a coffee shop and some community meeting space. That's up at the Hangar in Kentmore. Behind where the picture is taken, there's a brewery, I think, and some associated development that also helps to activate the plaza. I believe there's a splash pad there, seating, and very active on a warm summer day. It's also near the Burke Gildan as well. And then the example below is from Wisconsin. It's more of a green character, but has some newer development around the edges of it. And again, could accommodate large events like concerts to smaller kind of cultural events, so on and so forth. So this is a key part, and I know the city has plans to move the design and master planning both the Lower Commons and the Town Square forward as part of the implementation effort. So next steps, we will be publishing the final supplemental EIS. So for those of you that commented, appreciate all the comments. I did just also want to point out that the main focus of the commenting period for the SEIS is really to get specific comments about the draft SEIS and the specific environmental analysis. And as David said earlier, we'll continue to take general feedback on the plan or code at any time. So if you want to express your support or non-support, you know, that's really the avenue to do it. We'll, of course, respond to all the comments we receive, but just wanted to clarify that. Updates to the draft plan and code, late fall, early winter, and then legislative process for adoption around the same time. And I think, yeah, for those interested in more information, use the QR code, and then there's the link to the website. With that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
I guess I'll say thank you to everybody for the presentation. Before we, let me just ask, Matt, anything else before we jump into questions and conversation?
No, that's it.
Can I ask, the main question I wanted to make sure that we talk about beforehand is what is the task of the planning commission? And the reason I say that is because I'm curious to what extent our time should be spent on things that are productive or what things are unproductive. So, for example, if we spend the next two hours talking about building heights, that feels to me like it would be somewhat unproductive. Maybe five minutes, but probably not two hours. So should we spend all of our time arguing about 4,000 versus 2,000? Will that be productive for staff? Will that be considered by the council? What's our task as a planning commission? Because in this particular issue, it seems that the council has taken a greater initiative on their own. And so we're here to support the study of what they've directed. And I just want to find a balance where we are productive in our conversation in a way that's helpful to the folks working on it and in a way that contributes to input to the council but doesn't have us spending hours on things that make no difference.
We have direction on the EIS, and we are prepared to finalize it. It's just a matter of time, you know, that we complete it, incorporate all the comments and respond to them, complete the study, you know, that sort of thing. And, you know, tonight's meeting was intended to be just informational and reporting out the council's decision. We have direction on the number of units to study and how that fits into the EIS. So that chapter is largely closed. Now we kind of pivot towards the plan, the draft plan. So we have a draft plan posted. We've shared that with you, I think, for the past month it's been posted. And, you know, you have the ability to review it and, you know, just kind of study it. I think on August 7th, which is, you have a meeting next Thursday. It's a busy schedule, I know. You have a meeting next Thursday to discuss impact fees, which isn't related to the Town Center necessarily. But then we're meeting again on August 7th. And at that meeting, I think we'll have a broader discussion about the draft plan and that sort of thing. But in anticipation of that, I think next week, we're going to provide a, you know, the conveyor link. Have you worked on with that program?
Yes.
And that'll be an opportunity for you to evaluate the plan and mark it up, provide suggestions and that sort of thing. And then that's what we will have our discussion on on August 7th. So you'll have a couple of weeks to continue your evaluation and provide suggestions and that sort of thing. But for tonight, if there's any pressing issue that you'd like to discuss, you know, we have David, we have Jeff, myself, Audrey's online as well. You know, we can have a discussion.
Any idea, is that plan going to be like a thousand-page packet to review? Just for my time allocation?
Is more better.
Okay, we'll see it when we see it.
The code too, yeah, that's, we want to take this, you know, we want to make sure we get all the comments on the plan. So that's how we're teeing it up. Now, David, is there anything else that we need to mention?
No, that was well put. You know, I think this is the process, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, whereby we want to move forward in sort of an integrated fashion with the final EIS and the draft plan review. So we'll nudge into the plan and start to review that. And we'll work also at the same time on getting the final EIS document out that can then help inform your time on getting the final EIS document out that can then help inform your final decisions on your recommendation to the city council regarding the plan. And that, that will happen over the next few months here. So, you know, I think the most pressing thing, as Matt said and as Jeff indicated, is really providing your feedback on the policy language and direction in the plan, you know, how, what are the things that we as a community want to see in the town center? Given that we are evaluating how to accommodate and promote diversity and affordable housing for 4,000 units of housing across the town center, what types of amenities, what types of road connections, what types of tree protection? You know, there are some tensions inherently in center planning. You know, one of those is that we are trying to achieve a higher density. Another is, is that we have an interest in this, you know, beautiful, green environment. And the question around tree retention is one that I think is really, if the commission could provide feedback on that, I think we'd find that really valuable. Does the city prefer that trees are allowed to be removed in favor of replanting trees and regenerating the canopy, the right canopy in the right place? Or is tree protection something that is ultimately, you know, the priority? And the challenge there, if you walk around the current town center construction project, Brownstones West, you can immediately see the impact that tree retention has on viability of construction, because it largely sets the grade. It sets the grade and it sets the pattern. And it is an inherent challenge to development and redevelopment. You'll see, if you walk around out there, that there are, there's a cluster of large trees that are required to be retained, but that the grade of the project needed to be adjusted and brought down within the tolerance of what our code allows for grading. But what that results in is a patch of trees that are elevated, you know, some, some almost eight feet above the grade of the rest of the project. And then that cluster of trees will then have to be buttressed in by a wall around them. And, you know, what is the ultimate viability of those trees being retained? It's not that the developer was trying to cut down all the trees, the developer was trying to make all of the things work. Drainage, you know, road grades, sewer, sewer gravity alignments. It's quite challenging to lay out infrastructure in multiple dimensions with multiple objectives. So that's one example of a conversation I think the commission could have to help guide this. There's others as well. So just wanting to see what interests the commission as you read through the plan that will be sent to Convia, and we'll pull all the comments and questions together. And, you know, when we come back in August, the first meeting in August, I guess the only meeting in August, first week of August, that we'll be able to then have a list of things that we really want to talk about as a group and get, try and find some solutions and get feedback on. Hope that helps.
Yes, it does. Okay, so let's jump into questions and comments, and I have a number, and I'm sure all of you do probably as well, or at least some. What I'd like to do is try to do like one or two questions with each council member and move to the, or commissioner and move to the next, so that we kind of all get a chance to speak, and some of us will have the same questions. And so I'm going to try to just move, move around and then do another circuit and see how that goes. Okay? So let's start with you, John.
I don't know how I got the lead off, but, okay. I'm not going to say anything, Zayad. Just a side note here on trees. A little over 100 years ago, the entire plateau was clear-cut. So trees do grow back, and this is a very long-term plan, 20 years plus. I guess core to this whole thing, council's already given us some direction on number of units. To make that work, I think the key is the zoning map that you've shown a couple times. That's sort of baseline and work from there. So that's sort of my editorial comments. At least a couple of commenters, either tonight and in the written comments, talked about expanding the town center. As far as I know, it's not getting expanded. So I guess technical questions, the forecast memo you included from Lake Washington School District was fascinating reading, not just for our city, but sort of regionally, really interesting. And so my one question is, in the Lake Washington School District letter to the city regarding the supplemental EIS, they expressed some concern about Form Based Code for potential future school development in the town center. And I assume that staff will somehow address that.
Yeah, we've talked about that one, and I had followed up and let the staff know that I do think that's something we need to take a look at in the draft. In other Form Based Codes we've done, we've done like a civic use carve-out, which I think could apply to schools and other types of uses that maybe are a little bit unique and provide some additional flexibility. So I agree with you, and it's something we're going to take another look at, and I'm confident we'll come to a reasonable solution on that.
If I could add something to that, so I agree with what Jeff said, and thank you for raising this. It's a great question. And, you know, I think the school district is really interested in preserving its ability to respond to any infrastructure needs that we might have as a community over time. Currently, they don't have a need to develop that site. They evaluated it, and they decided that based on enrollment forecasts, they don't have the need to develop it currently. So they halted their proposal to do that. They are seeing enrollment decline starting in 2028. And like you said, it's a great read. I learned a lot by reading that myself. The one thing I would say is that the comment made is a good one, in that if we wanted to add a policy statement in the plan, or some sort of visionary statement about how civic amenities like school space or, you know, other infrastructure requirements are given some additional flexibility as part of, you know, Form Based Code standards, that that could then influence the code. I think the item you're talking about directly is a code item. And we want to make sure that we have the right direction when we are aligning the code to the plan, built into the plan. So we might want to look to add a statement or something in the plan that reflects that and addresses the school district's comment letter directly.
Seda, you're next.
As usual, I have simple questions, Chair. It said that transportation, like whether it's 2,000 or 4,000, it's only one intersection will have a loss of service. I'm kind of surprised by that.
I am too. You know, we have the traffic management plan, and we have the traffic model. And we put, you know, the land use inputs, you know, for both into the model, and those are the results. But perhaps Audrey can speak to that a little? I want to...
Sure. Yeah, this is, this intersection is anticipated to fail in our, it's noted in our transportation master plan as well, as an intersection that would likely fail under several different scenarios. So we will, of course, be watching that intersection. It is not failing currently, but we will be watching that.
My question is, is that the only intersection, though?
We have a few others that we're watching that were identified in our transportation master plan, but in terms of the town center SCIS, yes.
Okay. Is it possible for me to look at it, though? Like, however that assessment or...
Yeah, there's a few things we need to add to that memo, which I mentioned. But, you know, all the evaluation of each of those intersections is in that report. It's noteworthy that it identifies just, you know, the peak times, the AM peak and the PM peak, and how the intersections are affected during those.
It's in the report, okay.
Yeah, it is.
Thank you.
And then we also evaluated, you know, different network scenarios. So keep that in mind as well. Now, there is impact. It's just a matter of they don't fall below the approved level of service in our, in the traffic management plan and in the, in the city code.
Okay.
So, yeah, there's, there will be delay, and I think that's one of the maps that Jeff showed, but the delay is de minimis. And I don't think there's, other than that one intersection, there isn't that great of an impact on, you know, the overall network.
Okay, I would like to say that, yeah.
I think if I could add to that, one thing that's important is, is understanding, whether or not you agree with how it's measured and what the standard is, it's understanding what the level of service is and how it's measured. So we're measuring intersections. We're not measuring corridors or segments. So we're measuring the time spent at an intersection, to put it in the simplest layman's terms. And it's measured across the different turning motions at an intersection. So it doesn't, so, and this is where this sort of, trying to understand how it's measured and what the metric is, and I want to make sure everyone's aware of this for complete transparency, because this is where this starts to not align completely with the, you know, what you might think of as your experience at an intersection. And the way this is measured is, it's the average across the intersection. So if you were at a four-way intersection, I might be getting this wrong, and Audrey can correct me, and Transportation Engineers can correct me, the beauty of me explaining this is I'm not a Transportation Engineer. I get your grace if I get it wrong. So I'm trying here. So, so the way I think about this is, is that if you're at a four-way intersection, a stoplight intersection, let's say, two lanes, all four directions, and you have a turn pocket, so a third lane, basically, that if you're, if there's a delay in the turn pocket heading, say, southbound, and that delay is longer than it normally is, that's averaged out across the other directions at that intersection. So, so what happens there is, in order for an intersection to really start to degrade, you need to see all of the directions and the turning motions start to be affected with their delay at that intersection. If it's just one direction, then, then, yes, you're going to see it degrade, but you're not going to see it degrade as much, because on average, across all four of the directions, it's not, it's not, it's averaged out. So that's, that's one of the things to keep in mind.
David, you confused me more than what I understood, but I'll follow up with Audrey and Matt.
Yeah.
There's a great description, if I can just, a really quick, in our, in our transportation master plan. It's under section 2.5, Chapter 2 and 2.5.1, it describes intersection levels of service.
Perfect. And I do have masters in transportation planning, so I hope I will understand a little bit. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. The next question I have is, emergency evacuation is four hours and 40 minutes?
Yes.
Is that a safe time to evacuate? Because I don't want to be the one at the four hour 35 minutes.
Right, yeah. And, you know, there's also, there's a lot more information in that, other than what we're, we're reporting out, similar to that traffic report and some of the things that we want to add in there. And these questions are helpful, because it's, as we talk about it more, we want to be sure that we're including that information. And I think it's around three and a half hours that 90% of the community can be fully evacuated. So there's different levels, and then, of course, there's different disasters that are being responded to. And the idea is that if you have enough advance time, you need four hours and 40 minutes, you know, in advance to alert everyone. And I'm pretty sure there's a, like, a emergency, you can sign up for like a...
The notification, yeah.
Yeah, the notification. As long as that order is given, you know, more than four hours and 40 minutes in advance, then the whole community can be... Now, that's a scenario where the entire community is evacuated. That study breaks it up into different zones, and it's more likely that one or two zones would have to be evacuated, that would be completed, and then other zones would be, it would be staged that way. So there's a lot of considerations in that regard.
Thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Before I go to Mike, I just want to pile on the traffic a little bit. I think that the, the challenge, which I've expressed before, and Audrey will probably roll her eyes, but, you know, there's the, there's the engineering explanation that comes from some computer model, and that is a thing. And then there's the experience that people have driving. And then there's the perception that comes out of those two things, which, since I've been involved with the city directly, which is since 2016-ish, there's been an underlying distrust of the model and whether it represents reality. And it seems like in that amount of time, we should have done something to prove out whether the model reflects reality in the city of Simamish in any way or not, because I'm not convinced, and I'm actually on your side. So there's a lot of people that are not convinced. And so when it's the number one comment of concern, I think we need to be more proactive, assertive about providing some explanations that will help people to understand what we're talking about. There's just too much of a dissonance between the engineering part of it and the people who don't get any of that, they just know that they get stuck at an intersection, and then they just distrust what you say. And so I don't know, I'm pointing out a problem without an answer, but I do think we've had a lot of time to do something with this, and still here we are with a large percentage of the community that thinks that our traffic analysis is not representative of what happens in the city. Now, everybody thinks that their city is special. I get that, and maybe we're not, and maybe we could do something that would prove that we're not. But that hasn't happened, that I can think of. And so when it's the number one comment about the plan that the council has proposed studying, I think we should probably think harder about how to try to translate things into a way that people, that, some people are always going to be against this, I get that, and some people are always going to be for it, no matter what happens. But it would be good if we could bring along some of the people in the middle of that spectrum by addressing the concerns that they have, which is, I think, what a lot of the public commenters are expressing. They just want to be heard, and they want somebody to respond to their comments in a way that they understand. And I don't really think, not intended to be a big critique here, but I don't really think in nine years, whatever that is, that we've really ever done that. So as a suggestion, given that it's not one of the 2% comments, it's the 50% comment or whatever, we should think harder about how to address that.
So your comments, you're exactly right, and we've heard this again and again, and...
Wait a minute, what did you say there?
You were.
I don't hear that very often, so I like to just, you know...
Mark the time. It's 8:17.
We had it.
Yeah, we'll get the clip. It's lost in the, in the technical documentation. It's all there. The thing is, is that there's an appendix to the Transportation Master Plan that explains the approach, including the different calibrations that occur. So they, you know, they, they use the ITE numbers, which are the standard as far as how, you know, a land use will affect, you know, traffic, how much traffic is generated. But then they, they ground-truth that by, you know, testing different areas and that sort of thing. That isn't in that report. When I said that we need to add to that report, I think that's what we need to start doing next. And it's good to hear your concerns, and then also if we get additional questions from you, and, you know, those are things that we can respond directly to.
I guess maybe what I'm trying to suggest is that we need to go deeper in the conversation about it, because you cannot tell people in any community that you're going to add an additional 4,000 people.
Yeah.
2,000 dwelling units times two, 4,000 people.
Right.
And you're not going to really affect traffic that much. People just will not believe that statement.
When the perception is there's a traffic issue now, I totally get that.
So we need to go deeper into doing something with that, whether that's demonstrating some specifics or creating a visual or something to help people see what's really being discussed and in their own mind, truth-tested. and, in their own mind, truth-tested.
Yes.
So to Mark's comment, a number of years ago, I saw a short video where they studied the difference between a four-way stop and a roundabout, because a lot of people thought roundabouts were terrible things and very inefficient. And so they actually videoed cars on this setup and timed everything so you could see it, and, you know, it was concrete then.
Yeah.
And that, you know, that could be expensive, Audrey, but some sort of visual really, really can help.
Okay.
I don't know what that looks like.
And let's also keep in mind that, you know, we are looking at impacts created by this amount of development. It doesn't address all the existing issues, and it's not, you know, purporting to solve, you know, something that's already, you know, under stress. But we just want to see what that impact is. And so, you know, we could probably speak to that a lot better, and, um, you know, give us the opportunity to do that.
Sorry, I consumed a bunch of time there, Mike.
That's okay. But I'm going to add, I was going to say pile on, but add, because the evacuation times, which came up, it wasn't as high as transportation, is partly dependent on transportation as well. So it's actually higher than the 50%ish. And that level of service that's the average through the intersections, if you're making that left turn and you're sitting and waiting forever, that's all you care about. The fact that everybody else is moving really smoothly, big deal, you know? So, so a few things to think about. Not for my comments, and not to pile on ones. First off, I, I really want to recognize all the people that were making public comment tonight. They were specific, they were like moaning and groaning, it was like, take a look at a wildlife corridor, take a look at this, what about the financial impacts? And, and I've got a list, and we need to look at those, so, and I, I'm sure, you know, planning will do some of that, but we'll remind you. And I hope this comes around again, but I'll, I'll just make one other comment. The timeline, as I understand it, will have us finalizing both the plan and the code before the end of the year, uh, which, which I think probably makes sense, but there's a lot there. And to fully address concerns of the community, that's going to be done much more by the plan and the code than the decision that council made, well, not much more, but, but will have a big impact. And I feel like we have a real responsibility for the community to do a deep dive into both. And so this is just a, I guess, being cautious about the timeline, because if I understand it, um, trying to finish this by the end of the year is, is really self-imposed. It's not like, you know, the, the comprehensive plan had a hard and fast deadline, right? So we want to make sure that we're hearing public comments, that the commissioners have a chance to do a deep dive, uh, and, and really understand both, uh, because this is going to be a document that will drive what the cities, this town center at least, if not the city's going to look like for, you know, the next several decades. So just a, a little concern about the timing and, you know, giving us opportunities to really dive in deep.
Audrey?
Yeah. Thanks, Doug. I think I pressured you by just turning the mic on. And, uh, following up on Commissioner Mike, I, I want to say, if, if, I was thinking about this, like, if this was about a week ago, I would have had thought of something else to talk about, but in the last couple of days, I was just driving up Sahali, and I saw, and suddenly I saw a deer come by, and then the deer saw me and saw the traffic and then moved back into the woods. And I was like, that is pretty cool, that I get to see this on the way back and want to go back. And that was a great feeling. Then I want to take you to today morning, I had to come to Seattle, and I had to turn in, and this goes on to the turn-in lane that we talked about right now, and that experience. And I was groaning, because I saw all the traffic, and I'm like, oh my God, I have to go to Seattle, and now I'm going to be stuck here, and then I'm going to be stuck on 520, and then I'm going to be stuck on 5, IFI is going to take me forever to get there. The other side was moving pretty smoothly, but that made almost no difference for how I felt. It was, it was pretty moot for me. And that's the problem that is inherent in Simamish, because we are a BIDRUM community, it happens that we travel all in the same direction, either south or north, Isakua or Redmond, and most of the people are going to struggle through it. To assume that with 4,000 units coming in, that that will not change how it is, for a mathematician, and I study mathematics for my bachelor's and master's, for a mathematician seems like a mathematical game rather than reality, and we have to do a better job at it, I'm ready to jump into that, to figure that out, but I think we owe everyone who spoke today, and those who did not speak today, too, or spoke on Tuesday, an answer based on that. That's number one. Number two was that, uh, I don't know how the discussions with Lake Washington School District have taken the 4,000 into consideration, what happens at that time. Because if we take that into consideration, to then say that it lowers the enrollment seems a little odd or dichotomous at this point in time for me. I'm not able to relate the two of them together.
Right.
So we probably have to go back and to look at it to see what happens when we have such an expansion, and does that affect, uh, the school? And if it does affect the school, there might be other strategies that we need to have, and that will probably inform the city council on what to do and other things. But I'm not saying that that's all a bad thing, but it's just that we could do the job on planning towards that, right? Number three, uh, I really love the idea of the town center, of the maps that we saw of, of Oakwood, Wisconsin. I have a cousin who lives in Wisconsin, and, and I was instantly jealous of him that he can go to see that in a short drive, and I, I don't, I have to see that only in my imagination over here. To build such a thing would be fantastic. But to overlay that in with the city, what we are doing is that we are showing a 2D, not, yeah, not even a, yeah, two-dimensional map of the city of Simamish, some sections of it, southeast and fourth, and 228th, or southeast 20th and 228th, whatever it is, we show some intersections, and then we say that this is, this is what it is, and then we show a good plan of a city, uh, and we say that, hey, this is where it is, and people are not able to relate to that. And so when we say that we're going to improve the city life or people's lives in this community by, by building this up, I think runs into a wall when we do that kind of thing. So I look at all of those things, I'll do my job when we, when we come to doing that thing, but if we have that information as we go through this review for July and August, at least in notes, that'll be fantastic, and that's my points.
Yeah, I think we can address that, yeah.
Thank you.
Sorry, Ed.
Let's start with a question, number one. Jeff, in your presentation, you made a reference, and I want to kind of get your, uh, position on it. You made a statement that a future road within a town center is going to be financed and built by the developer?
It's a combination.
No, you said, you didn't say combination, you said by developer.
I said, I, I believe I, if, if I, what I intended to say was that many of the streets, or most of the streets, will be built out, but the city has had a number of the connector roads on its capital improvement program for many years, and that was what the network analysis variations that we studied were really focused on. So we wanted to understand, for example, what does it look like without, uh, say, the northwest connector road? And so we ran some of the modeling with and without that, but, uh, yes, most of the streets will be privately built just by road miles, but there are a few connectors that are in the city's capital program as city-led projects.
So Audrey-
Can I interrupt for a second? We need to extend the meeting, would somebody do that, please?
I move that we extend the meeting till 9:30.
Second.
It's been moved to second to extend to 9:30, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, thank you.
So kind of following up that question, Audrey, do we have some numbers? What, what is the investment overall, no matter who pays for it, as far as the roadway structure, that we see in all the town center plans? Some numbers, millions, and, and the split between the developer and the city's share?
We, we don't have that this evening. There are two projects on our, our six-year lists that, that would be, uh, city-led infrastructure for some of them, for one of the projects, and then, um, developer with six street building half, and then the city building half, the southern half of the road that's set to go to construction next year, because that's our front.
So we don't have a number even in the spread, say, okay, it's 50/50, 30/70, do we have any, any idea? Because that is something that brought up by a number of people.
Yeah, we could easily calculate the road, I, I think we could. In GIS, we get to calculate the road miles of, um, the proposed streets and break it down by private versus the ones that are in the city capital plan, if that would be helpful.
You know, there's also a matter of phasing, and, you know, when we say that the costs will be borne by developers, um, you know, for the most part, uh, roads will be built by developers as they, as they build out. But the city may, may need to come in and, and fill in some gaps, or, you know, do something in order to, you know, take advantage of an opportunity to improve the overall system. Now, that's still borne by the developers, because we're collecting impact fees, and that's something that, you know, we've taken a long look at. And so that fund would be used in order to, uh, pay for those costs, for those improvements.
But the cost of the construction of the roadway, Matt, uh, is much more than what you can collect as far as impact. Impact is going to be a small fraction of total cost.
I mean, we're, you know, it's, it's tens of millions of dollars that we're, we're projecting, and it's just the gaps. There's other, you know, there, there would be other times where we, we may see a need in order to, you know, actually build some things out. But there's, you know, this plan, um, we, we have more planning to do after this plan would be adopted, and that would be, you know, and we mentioned the town square, there's, you know, the, the Parks Department is, is going to, you know, move forward with the planning process to kind of, you know, provide the, provide the parameters for a town square and how that would be programmed and that sort of thing. But we'll need to do implementation and infrastructure planning in addition to, you know, this overall plan.
Second question, and SEIS reference made to the improvement to the 228. Jeff, can you elaborate? Are we widening 228 within the limit of the town center?
No, we're not widening 228.
Specifically makes reference to the improvement, that's why I asked that question. I don't know exactly what the lang, what's the word was that, but, so we're not changing any as far as the number of lanes, as far as dedicated right turn, left turn, nothing?
No, there, well, there is no right-of-way, I mean, you'd have to acquire right-of-way, and in some cases that would be imfeasible, so there is no-
Don't, don't we have a right-of-way on the, on the, on the east side to do some widening?
I would have to confirm that, but my understanding is, uh, no, and, um, again, with some of the topographical constraints, existing development, um, anyways, the, the answer is that there is no current capital project to widen 228.
It's not needed, we are looking at, um, some different opportunities through the bike and pedestrian mobility plan for multimodal improvements on, specifically on the shared use path on 228. Just a-
Okay. Hesham?
I support the development, I support the town center, and I support maximizing the use of the land. But I also take a very strong position when it comes to responsible growth versus what I can call it unresponsible growth. And I go by measure twice and cut once. My recommendation to city council is to measure 10 times before they cut once. I, I was watching the city council meeting on TV live, and I heard it multiple times, that what the city council, who is wanting to achieve its affordable housing, it's not about just the numbers, it's affordability. So like the young gentleman here, he can live here, so my kids can live here, so people that age can continue living here, I just don't see how you can provide affordable housing. All what I'm seeing is we are giving a blank check to the developer, we are doubling the number of units without putting any restrictions on how can we guarantee there will be affordable housing. Jeff raised a concern during the city council, during the public comments about affordable housing and the 2,100 units, and if we don't comply with that, what will the state do? Similarly, city council member raised that concern. I just highly, highly encourage that we study this carefully before we proceed forward. I, I was glad to hear that they asked to proceed with more studies, and they did not take the decision of this is what we will do. But looking at the quality of the data we heard today, I, I think we, we are not studying this in depth. When I see all the holes that we are poking through, talking about the transportation plan, I, I have the same feeling about everything else, that we, we are just touching the surface and we're coming up with a plan. And again, it just worries me that we're going to do something that the current residents and the future ones will, will pay for, will struggle. The, the cost of the development that Said was talking about here, that would not support affordable housing. So I'll, I'll just leave it there. I have more questions, but, uh, let's, let's go around it, one more time.
I'm going to ask one of mine. I'm going to start with, I'm going to start with, no, no, I'm going last, that's my deal. Uh, I'm going to start with, this is Jeff and David, probably, and I'm going to probably duck under the table when I ask, but, um, so one of the things that concerns me about this a little bit is I feel like we're, there's also a disconnect about most folks who are making public comment, and the discourse in the community is that we have two highly detailed, firm plans that are going to produce exactly the things that we're describing, because that's, they don't necessarily know that there's anything different than that. And I'm not sure that people really realize the, uh, how soft the plan really is. And what I mean by that is, you know, there is no, no action plan, that's not a choice. We have to do some things, and so we're going to have to do something. And we also have a, a target of 4,000. Well, we can set that target, and it might never happen, right? I guess my question is, um, what I was thinking about is, what's really, so for example, what's preventing development up to 4,000 dwelling units right now if we, if we don't change anything? Or better yet, what if we, what if we do the form-based code, change the zoning, do the other things kind of on the list, and don't use the words 4,000? What prevents them from building 4,000 anyway?
Well, that, it's a, it's a excellent question, so let me unpack that a little bit. So the first thing is that I think, you know, the original EIS, they selected a preferred alternative of 2,000. It's been communicated as a cap, I'm not sure it actually is. That's not really how SEPA works, you may have to do a judicial environmental review, but it's not been a cap. And in order to put an area-wide cap into zoning, again, I have never seen that, but it creates a whole number of legal questions. You know, if you have a property that's zoned for only residential use, and there's already been 2,000 units, and you want to go build your house or your units, you would be prevented theoretically from doing that. So is that a taking? Is there another economic use of that that could happen? So that's one question. But really, the answer to your question, Chair Bachmann, is the incentives, right? So let's go to density. You pick up the code today, you read it, you say, in the A-zone, which is where the Sky Apartments is, you know, 100 to 150 units an acre, existing building, and you read the code, and it says the base density is 16 units and the max density is 40 units. Well, none of those, well, the base units is true, the max density is not true, because if you are able to access the incentives, which are the TDR units, then you can get to a higher density. So the three buildings that are under permitting, uh, in the town center, but are not, have not moved forward, are mid-rise buildings that have TDRs in them. So that has preserved rural lands, which is a public benefit identified by the city, so that land has been preserved. And again, the big trade-off under the Growth Management Act- And again, the big trade-off under the Growth Management Act is you develop the urban areas so you can preserve the rural areas. That's really a big trade-off. So let's say right now you went into the code and you eliminated the need to use TDRs and you simply aligned the development standards, which is essentially what's in the action alternative. You could build a 70-story building and you align the densities with that, you could get probably many more units than 2,000 anyways. The challenge is, is right now, the way the incentives are set up and the fact that they've been exhausted, I don't even think you can get close to the 2,000 units. So that's, I think, where the disconnect is. And I think, again, you know, in terms of feedback on the plan and the code, what specifically in the plan and the code are we uncomfortable with or do we like? The fact that it might add up to a total number of units is not as important in the plan. It's important for analyzing the SEIS because we have to do that. But I think that's the type of discussion that you typically have at the planning level. And so let's go, you know, rather than what are the number of potential units? Do we want a 70-foot building? Are we comfortable with that? And we have it here today. If we're uncomfortable with that, we could change it. We have a middle zone, 50 feet in height. That's the same as the B-zone today. It's just that the densities aren't aligned with that. The densities in the B-zone don't allow you to build a 50-foot building with residential units in it. Then go to the other zones, I think mainly the E-zone, and I think there's one other that really allow densities that are now lower than the R-zone. So I think to your point about some of the things we have to do, we have to at least implement that in those zones. So you're correct. I mean, you could choose any number you want to, to have under the SEIS, but the reality is, is the number of units will come out of what's in the code. The other thing is that when we do a capacity model for land use, we make a ton of assumptions. And you could actually, in some cases, perhaps get more. One example is that when you do your model on land use, you take out what's called a market factor. And that's basically land that a developer or a property owner, I should say, isn't willing to sell. So let's say we take out 20% of the land. Well, we don't know what individual property owners are going to make in terms of a decision. They could all decide they want to sell and that could result in more units than the model shows. Flip side, 50% of the owners could decide, I don't want to sell, I just want to keep my property the way it is and the land isn't available. So those are all things that we try to account for in a reasonable way. And there's lots of guidance from the state and the regions of how to do that. But the point is, is there's a lot of assumptions and frankly, we can't predict the future very well. So that's where, under the EIS, you want to kind of study the max conditions that could happen, understanding that there's a range of outcomes that could happen from the code. So again, if we weren't so focused on the number of units and we were focused more on the form-based code elements, the scale of development, the uses we want, then I think that's a very different conversation. And again, property owners go to develop at the site level, trying to spread 2,000 units around a large area, you know, it just, when we've looked at it at a site level, it doesn't work. And that's why we have seen very little development in town center.
And so I guess my response to that is, I completely agree. I think that the unfortunate part about this is there's important work that does need to be done. There are studies that need to be done and, and you guys are doing that. But we're so distracted with this idea that we're deciding between 2,000 or 4,000 as a hard number is very misleading. And I don't know how to fix that, but it, it distracts from all the other important things that need to be looked at and taken care of.
You're, you're exactly right, Chair. And I think, you know, the middle housing is a good example. And we've just implemented middle housing across the, most of the city, like 95% of the city, right? In some cases, we went from R1 zoning to 12 to 18 units an acre. So those changes were far, in some ways, greater than some of the changes we're making now. And again, that was prescribed to us by the state, so there was very little choice in that. And again, because we've zoned that doesn't mean that we're going to see a huge rush of units. You know, there's a lot of theoretical capacity, but some of this is iterative. You put something in place, you monitor what happens, then you make changes. I think the city's been really good about that. And I think that's part of the, the ongoing program and there can be tweaks to it. So again, I think focusing a little bit of the conversation back to what are the qualities and scale of development, building heights, development standards, uses, street design, issues like the town square, that's all going to make it great. Whether there's another story or two of housing in some cases or less, you know, those are probably less consequential issues. And again, during that conversation, if we want to make some changes based on that, I mean, we can certainly do that. But trying to focus on setting a total number of units is, is not the way to go. And, and we really have to understand it more at the individual site level.
Yep. Okay. Move to the next round. John?
So not so much a question as a comment. And I think Matt actually said this earlier, is each of these large projects, as we go forward over the next, say, 20 years, will have to go through the entitlement permit process, including concurrency, you know, and they can get shut down for any number of reasons of not enough sewer capacity, they're exceeding our traffic standards, there's issues with the school district or fire district. So back to Jeff's point of the artificial, kind of artificial number, it comes back to the individual project. So again, to my point, I think the zoning map is the baseline of, okay, how do we want to try to put this together, make it work the best way for the city? Because the current zoning, based on the audit, isn't going to work so well.
Yep.
So what's the best way forward?
Suda?
I don't have any questions, but I just want to say a comment. I do, I'm in support of full, you know, town center and then affordability, because I want kids like Mr. Chambers and my kids to be back in the town and be more vibrant. So, but I agree with Hisham to have a good, solid plan so that if anybody, any of the residents ask us questions, we should be able to give simple, explainable answers. Because the reason why I asked about the transportation plan is my neighbor Lisa, she always asks me, why is this left turn taken forever? Can you guys do something? So we should be able to help them so they understand. That's all. But thank you all for all your hard work. Thank you.
Mike?
You weren't laughing at me when you were saying that.
If I could, if I had a dollar for every time somebody said, you're on the planning commission, can you do something about that?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, that was it. All right. Hey, so I know there's been comments made, in fact, I think there was something, David or Matt, this is going to take a long time. Like this is 20 years, right? That's reality. I understand that. We have an affordability issue and we have, by surveys done that were, you know, when we were putting together comprehensive plan, desire to have that, you know, patio or whatever you want to call it, the, the gathering place. To wait 10 years for that feels way wrong. And so my question, or that's, that's a comment. So how can we, in the plan and the code, maybe other incentives, speed the development of a couple of critical pieces? And for one, that I'd personally like to see, because it helps to address some of the density and some of the kind of commercial thing, and Matt and David heard me mention this in a prep meeting we had on Monday, I think. And Jeff, you might be aware, I think it's the Village area near the center of Woodenville. It's not the one right on 202, but that, I've spent a couple of times down there, love going there, multiple restaurants at different price points, a great ice cream spot. And the, the size of those units, I think they're four, you know, above the commercial, really attractive, not overwhelming. It doesn't feel at all like downtown Redmond. And it would provide that kind of gathering place, presumably done well with some affordability to it. How could we get that in place sooner rather than later? And, and also to make sure that the code will allow, you know, construction like that. So, and you don't have to answer, but that's a question I would have as we're moving through this, because we can get so wrapped up in the paperwork around the plan, all of the details around the code, and like some of the other comments about affordability and what have you, will it really deliver? So the question is a little bit more about, are there things we can do to help deliver what the city has desired sooner rather than later? So, and if you have a quick answer for that, awesome, but I don't expect one.
I do have an answer. And this, this is always kind of the tension around, you know, who's doing what when you're trying to do a new town center like this. And we, you know, have worked in traditional downtowns, we've worked in existing developed areas that are looking to redevelop into more of a town center and then this, which is sort of a, the newer town center. And, you know, I think certainly the building out of the amenities that the city has already done with the civic campus and forth is great. I think the city is committed to moving forward the design of the town square and master planning for the lower commons, which could, you know, be done in advance of some of the development. And then I think, you know, getting the policy and incentives right around affordable housing will be really important. Having those kind of open space and gathering spaces, I think, really makes that kind of urban living, you know, worthwhile and beneficial. If you don't have that, you're kind of missing out on kind of what the experience should be. So I think, you know, there are some key things that the city could move for that could help incentivize some of the other affordable housing and market rate housing for moving forward. So we'll take another look at that in the plan.
I'm going to ask something about what you're talking about, Mike, is how much, how much should we feel like and should we be able to tell the community that we can actually influence the outcome? So what you experienced was something that was a great outcome. You liked it and it's popular and all that kind of stuff. But, but I don't have a strong perception of how much we can actually influence to have a good outcome. We can set boundaries and rules and we can draw sketches and do all of that, but how much can we feel confident that we will end up with a good outcome?
Well, I, I think, again, the, the degree that we know what we want, it makes it easier to articulate that in the plan and then really implement it in the code, right? So for example, we were just talking about building heights, right? We have a standard building height, but there's a lot more that goes into the design of the building, right? There's modulation, there's opportunities for green roofs, there's terraces, there's sort of the ground level. And I think we're planning to spend some more time on some of the design standards, which again, in the existing code are kind of cumbersome, they're very subjective, difficult to administer. We did add some new things into the code, but we haven't gotten quite as far as we would like to go. So, you know, just hearing, hey, here's a great example of something we love in, in Woodenville. You know, we can go and kind of take a look at that and talk through what some of those qualities are. You know, we've been so focused on the technical details, the traffic modeling, and, and I get it, it's always a tricky thing and we totally agree that we need to follow up on that. But we've been so focused on the technical details up until this point that I think we maybe haven't had to have some of those conversations about what we want in outcomes and how we can get there, right? You know, and there's been discussions about architectural style and northwest style and, you know, some of those types of issues that we haven't had a lot of conversations on. So we could do some fun things, like everyone could bring pictures of their favorite places that they think represent town center. We've done that in other communities. That can be really fun. Because there are a number of things that have nothing to do with the number of units, right? And, and some of that is the parks and the public spaces and some of the other amenities. Yes, there is a density component to deliver them. But in reality, it could happen well in advance of other things happening. So I think those are some of the conversations and things that we would like to hear from the planning commission so we can deliver those outcomes, understanding that the city only has limited role in some of those pieces and.
Streetscape and, you know, street furniture, benches and, and light poles and, you know, all these things that, you know, need to come together. It doesn't need to happen through this planning process, but it's something that we need to kind of land on as we move forward. You know, even, you know, like using like stamped concrete or, you know, I don't think we want pavers, but you know, different, you know, things that'll really make, you know, the town center, you know, give it identity, give it character and make it Samamish.
Can I, can I caveat that with one thing? And I'm not trying to be the downer here, but I want to also make sure to temper the conversation with the fact that the state has passed some mandates down to cities that really limit what our tools are. We can't have a design review committee anymore. We can't have subjective design standards. So we need to be very clear and concise about what we want in terms of building design. I think what Matt's talking about are things that the city is in, actually in control of.
Yeah.
And, you know, things like landscaping standards, there's a lot of opportunity. But when it comes to, you know, the, the exact design of the building, you know, we, we don't have control over that. Because in part, the state has said that that is one of the causes for the increasing cost of housing and that they have then mandated the, the disbandment of design review committees, basically. So we're, we're left with objective design standards that guide how buildings can look and feel. I just want to be clear about that and, and highlight what tools we have at our disposal and what we're up against with the state telling us what we can and can't do.
Thanks, Steve.
And I would say I'm in the middle of all that and that I don't pick colors, but I do think that there is some pretty impactful ways that retail, commercial, residential can be deployed either monolithically or in a more diverse way that can create the outcome that you're describing, Mike. Or it can be done wrong and then it just, it's awful, right? It's just, it doesn't work at all. So there's some in-between there between picking the colors and defining the zoning.
Ajay?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to ask a question about what have we done right now with the area that we have in the, just behind City Hall, in the plateau, for anything other than July 4th? Have we tried something over here? That's a, that's a gathering space? That's a place where we can have some activities and other things? Other than July 4th, I kept thinking in my head, have we done something to tell people that, you know, there's a place you can walk around, there's a place you can do something and we have a big area over there? Have we done anything for that? Or am I the only one who's grasping to find out if we've done anything other than July 4th over here?
I'd, I'd have to look to our counterparts at Parks. You know, that, that is all taken up by our Parks Department. We don't have like a special events committee internal to the city, like I sat on in Bellevue for a number of years. We, I, I do know that they, you know, the farmer's market is a big one that does, you know, utilize the space. There are schools that use it, there, you know, the YMCA does use a lot of the space for summer camp activities. I routinely walk out there in the summer during the day. And if you go down into Lower Summamish Commons Park, it, it times is very full with children using the spray, the spray feature and other things. But in terms of events, I am not sure. I do know that the, you know, the gardens up on the other side of the Lower Summamish Commons Park are used for different events and different, different purposes. But if you wanted a, a list of all the things that the park.
I, I'm not into the list. I'm more into trying to understand, when we tell everyone who comes here and asks a question or comment about how the city is going to change based on this thing, what are we going to do? I don't know if we have a good example to show to them. And I'm struggling all the time with that. And what are you going to do? I get asked that question in, in planning commission, what are you going to do? And, and I say, we have an envisioned Summamish 2044 and, you know, you can take a look at that. And we're trying to build the city for the future. And then they say, oh, there is a bit of a dip right outside Seife, coming out from Seife. Why don't you guys fix that first? And I'm like, oh, that's not my job, but.
Is your question about the town square, programming of the town square?
Yeah, generally, as the town square, one of the things we are struggling to, and that I'm struggling to explain, is what we have today, which is all the, all the benefits of what Samamish has become today.
Yeah.
And what it is today to what we are envisioning the city of tomorrow.
Right.
And we, we don't have even a kind of a, what do you say, a peak into that to say, look at this, that there is a, we have, we will have more of the concerts on Saturdays. That there is a, we have, we will have more of the concerts on Saturdays, kind of an event which we have over here. You'll have people come up and this will become easier, people will walk up here, the transit will get better and so on and so forth. And people can extend that thought. Right now, people cannot extend any thought into that because we don't have that. Is, is that the root cause? Again, and like the chair said, I'm stopping to think about 2,000 or 4,000. I'm not doing that. It's let it come as it comes and then we'll figure it out.
So that, I think that is an area of the plan that we really need to improve. And, you know, I mentioned that, you know, the Parks Department will likely do some planning process to, you know, essentially create the programming for the town square. But I think this plan can kind of provide parameters and, you know, describe that and how that interacts with the comments.
Yeah, if we do that, and then we can see what comes out of it, whether there are 2,000 or there's 4,000. If there are exactly 4,000 people, we could say it's exactly 4,000. If there's 3,000 people, they're going to say you failed. There are 7,000 people, they're going to say it's failed. So there is, it's a, it's a whole and one kind of a quandary we are in. So let us try to change that paradigm and coming into saying, let's forget about that. Let's build the city as we would like to see it and then we will, we'll see who comes and when we build it, people will come.
I'm really happy to hear all of this. This is, yeah, this is good, good input. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's look at attachment A. Can you, can you show that attachment A on the report? The table? No? Okay, so there are numbers, there are numbers that I want to kind of check. It looks like that the, the difference between no action and action plan, civic and institution, what was the reason that is actually the square footage has substantially reduced by 50%? What are we losing by action plan?
Oh, in the, the civic uses, if you go to the original plan, this is my recollection, we can confirm this. But for example, if you look at the area around what's referred to as the notch property, let's see, that's sharing something here.
Yep.
Yeah, so if you look in the, if you look in the original plan and you look at the area in the A1 node, which is south of fourth, they had two civic buildings planned there and I believe that is the change. So again, these are just numbers for the purposes of studying the SEIS, they're not associated necessarily.
Are we reducing the size of the civic institution by 50%? That's what he tells me. Look at the numbers.
Yeah, right. Well, in terms of what we, in terms of what we studied, yeah. And again, I, I believe it's because it shows civic uses where housing is being built now.
So what are we losing?
It was just a purple building on a sketchup model. It, I don't know if it represented anything specific.
The acquisition of land to support that did not come to fruition.
Okay, and then we increase in the commercial, the retail substantially and reduce in office?
Again, I, I think it was a desire to see more commercial amenities, so we wanted to, to test that through the action alternative.
Talking about the parking, you're showing the square footage. What is, what is the unit that these calculations are made? You're showing 600,000, how many parking spaces we're talking about?
Well, usually for surface parking, I usually, again, I'd have to verify these numbers, but I do a lot of parking work, so I'll just talk in generalities. Typically for a surface parking lot, because it tends to be a little bit less efficient on cheaper land, we'll use a factor of around 400 square feet per parking space, which includes the parking space and the drive aisles. For structured parking, because of the extreme costs, we'll usually assume a more efficient layout and use somewhere around 350 square feet per unit. So that would give you a general kind of rule of thumb and I could.
Jeff, it would be really useful instead of a square footage showing the number of parking spaces because people, they understand number of parking spaces, right? And a square footage.
Right, but this, I believe the square footage is used to deal with impervious surface. But yeah, I understand your point. We can convert those for sure.
Total number of housing units, I didn't know till I looked at this chart. And as a matter of fact, when the deputy mayor made a motion to support the 4,000 and she made it very clear, up to 4,000. For the first time, I see in reference made actually is between 3,000 to 4,000, not only 4,000.
Right, that's correct.
So probably we should be making it clear that, that's, that's, it's not 4,000, it's three to 4,000.
Yeah, exactly. And again, there could be developments that have no housing on them. I mean, this is again, something we, we put as inputs in a land use model. So when you're doing a land use model and you have a mixed use zone that it could allow a standalone commercial development, mixed use or residential only, you have to make broad assumptions about what that percentage will be across the entire area. So those are some of the inputs that are, again, fairly general and difficult to predict, but that's standard practice. But yeah, so for those reasons, we show kind of a range. And again, we've been operating under the no action for not quite 20 years, but more than 15. And we're not even close to the 1,300 units, we're at 320.
Can I just add a couple of specific comments? I did the same thing in looking at this table. And I do think it's, this is a good demonstration, Jeff, particularly for you, that there are a bunch of us engineers out here in the community that look at this stuff. And I created my own tabulation here to do the math and, right? I mean, there's people that absolutely do that. Two, two things stuck out to me and I'm not necessarily asking for a lengthy discussion here, but just maybe take a look. And one is there's been this sort of discussion about how all we're going to get is townhouses if we don't do anything. And so we need to do something to get a different outcome. But on this table, it shows under the original plan, we're going to have 325 townhouses. Now we're going to have 800 townhouses, which is kind of contradictory to the statements about townhouses. It might be good to address that at some point because it, like I say, for all of us geeks out here, that sticks out a little bit. And then the other one that stuck out to me is the surface parking. The surface parking goes up by, you know, 150%, 160%. And that's a bit of a concern to me because surface parking is so bad from an environmental standpoint. And I guess I'd be curious, as we move through this discussion, to dig into what, what's underlying those assumptions? And can we do something different or is that just what it's going to be? I don't know, but surface parking, out of everything on this list, list always feels like a bad outcome to me.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can certainly change the plan, the policies in the code to drive better outcomes. I mean, one thing to point out is, and we could say, for example, limit surface parking or have certain standards for how it's designed. We need to be a little bit careful in some cases of requiring all structured parking because that could be, you know, $80,000 or more, first of all. But, you know, the parking standards are changing because the state passed the law. We don't currently have a parking maximum. I didn't, I haven't gotten the sense that that's something the community is interested in, but we could consider something to control parking. And we're certainly not bound by this. Again, this is something to test in this scenario, but it doesn't mean we have to like craft a code to allow this amount of parking. And I do think some more discussion about what we want in terms of outcomes makes sense. We do have on-street parking, I think on most of the streets. So that will provide some kind of short-term access to go to retail and things like that. Typically don't use that for residential parking unless you're on a residential only neighborhood, of which there will be probably some of that in town center as well. So appreciate the comments, we'll take another look at that and come back and have some more specifics to discuss in terms of parking policy and the regulations.
I want to, I want to jump in real quick, just sort of on that same point. So I didn't, I don't think I fully realized, but Jeff, what you're saying is that these are numbers that are, the main purpose is for input into the model.
Yes.
And, and not necessarily targets, but they're, they're likely based on, you know, best estimates that made sense to model out the action alternative and actually the no action alternative. So given that, and this is just, I'm wondering, maybe as we firm up the plan and the code, it would be helpful to go and recreate this table on the plan alternative. And again, there'll be, you know, a range and all of this is going to be dependent on the economics and all that kind of stuff. But the fact that, you know, even one of the public comments today was about the 36 versus the 32. And the engineers, like, you know, Mark is saying, it might be helpful in terms of communicating to the public where we're getting to as we move through the plan and the code. So just food for thought.
Well, it's kind of related to the, the fact that Chair, Chair brought it up and it was one of my questions. When you look at the ratio between surface parking and a structured parking, actually we're increasing the surface parking substantially more than a structured parking. So it's not a matter necessarily of the numbers, it's a matter of changing the, creating.
Some of that has been driven by the middle housing as well. Sorry, David, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I wanted to highlight that surface parking does also play a role as an interim measure, as, as a center built out. You know, it's, it's common to see surface lots be, be added while you're starting to see transit be brought online, right? It takes a while for development and transit to build side by side. And there are interim uses that are put on vacant land like surface parking. So accounting for that in that way is also important. Another piece of this is, is that, you know, parking is one, I think, out of all the things we talk about in permitting, that is the most fluid. It is the thing that we see change the most often in designs in buildings. We see buildings start out where they want to do, you know, five stories of underground parking. Then the economics of the project change. The next thing you know, they're, they're going to be doing two stories above and some shared parking on a surface lot next door. Then later, they're going to be doing no parking in the building and they're going to build a separate structure that is now a seven-story structured parking that they're going to share across the different projects. You know, this stuff changes so quickly as development designs change that, that it's, it's, we're trying to estimate here what a best guess is of a final outcome about where this might land. Economics of it all play a lot in this. And, and, you know, what, what I think would be a helpful conversation is, you know, do we want buildings that have two or three stories of, of above-grade part, structured parking at the base to be put in that disconnects the building from the streetscape? That's a, that's a question, you know, I, I see those around and some of them are designed well, some of them not so well. Another question is, you know, do we want standalone seven-story structured parking buildings in the town center? And if so, well then what do we, what is a requirement for it to be wrapped? How does it have to be treated? You know, there are, there are, the, the example is U Village, you know, that the whole new buildings they built on the side, they've been building parking garages there that they wrap with retail. Some of them you don't even know it's a parking garage. If you drive through downtown Ball Hill, they just brought online a new building that has at-grade above-ground parking that services, you know, it's the first three stories are, are parking and then it's residential above that. Do we want that as a community? These are the types of helpful things that we want to include as guidance in the plan to help drive the code. These numbers, again, I think is, is Mike, Mike said it well, Commissioner Brezko said it well. These are numbers that were put into, you know, a, a model, so to speak, for us to understand what the potential impacts might be.
I, I would just say that that's great. The original question was probably more simple minded than that. Housing count doubled, the commercial space went up by 20% and the surface parking went up 250% or 220%, whatever it is. And it just makes it go, huh, wonder why that is, we should definitely pay attention.
That's very important.
Just that simple.
My second question is very simple, evacuation, somebody brought up. Is that based on existing population or future population? When we talk about four hours of evacuation time? I looked at some numbers, the population in the next 10 years is going to be increased to 72,000. So is that based on the 72,000 population or based on the 65,000?
Who are you asking?
I don't know, I don't know who was going to answer it. I don't know who was going to answer it.
Yeah, there's growth built into that, but, you know, I, I think there's, you know, an opportunity to, you know, probably through the, the SEIS to recommend that, you know.
Clarification.
Right, well, or that the town center growth be included in it, if it isn't, yeah.
Chair, I have one small question on this one. What is this evacuation plan? Is this based on a hurricane? What kind of an evacuation plan are we talking about?
I don't.
Because, because the, the, the most common evacuation that I can think of is when there is an earthquake.
Just go downhill.
Yeah.
No, it, yeah.
Okay.
Well, it, it addresses several different types of.
Because at that time, we don't have a four hours and 40 minutes. Like Commissioner Sodaw was saying, that there's not four hours and 40 minutes. I don't want to be the four hours and 35 minute guy, right? Everybody's going to rush and that number doesn't, seems more theoretical than practical.
That's why the staging and how the zones work, you know, really matters. And, you know, the, the idea that the entire city would all be evacuated at once is, is pretty low.
So.
But, you know, we're specifically addressing comments through the SEIS as it relates to this plan. Sorry, David, go ahead.
No, I, I, those are, I, I, I'd also add that, you know, that, that one goal or objective of the town center could be that it is continued to be built out in a manner that can serve as a refuge during an emergency. You know, the civic campus already did during the, the bomb cyclones. We saw, you know, very wide usage of the city's civic campus because it had power. So can you design and build a town center that is more resilient to things we're seeing come along with climate change? And can that serve a role in some types of emergencies? And can that be a gathering place in the case of some types of emergencies? Understanding that, you know, fire is really hard to understand and, and manage. And that one is, I think all communities are, are, are dealing with that now. And we're, we're going to need to, to really try to continue to plan for that going forward.
That should be the screaming headline. Right now, we're talking of it like it's a footnote. When it was a bomb cyclone, you could have come here and this would have been the place to do it. That's a fantastic way to put that forward. And you, you gave a, a point that I never thought would, would be a factor. The, the outflow, outflow of traffic, which we usually think, which happens if there's a, if there's a calamity, is no longer the outflow, it's actually everybody coming into town to, to settle in, in, in that area during the bomb cyclone to, to live at a place where there is, to stay at a place where there is, there's electricity and water and everything. And I think that should be our headline to begin with.
Are we done with this exhibit? Okay, you're welcome.
No, we're not, but for tonight.
Well, tonight, yeah.
Hey, Matt, just, just a couple of follow-ups, Matt. I, I sent you an email a couple of weeks ago about the traffic study and if we can compare it to a benchmark that we all know. I'm not sure if you were able to share that email with the planning commission or if you were able to do anything with it.
Turned it on, I'm sorry. Yeah, I believe I shared it with the team, but yeah.
Because I did not want to share it with them, otherwise I will be violating the public thing. So if, if you can just send it to them. But what's more important to me, if we can see something that compares the volume that would be generated by the, whatever number of units that we are adding to a benchmark that we know. And I use the skyline.
Yes.
That, just the high school traffic. It's something we all live every day, we all see it every day, we know. And now we have the garbage one too. So if, if we can compare it to one of those, this way we will know what one second means.
Right.
And if it's real or no. Because like I said earlier, I, I truly do not believe in the accuracy of the data that we are providing city council.
Are you asking, what does level of service B or level of service C mean?
No, I'm, all what I'm saying is simple. We are adding 4,000 units or 3,000 units. I'm going to say two cars per household. All these people at some point in time will be leaving their homes. I'm going to say half of them, they need to leave in the morning to go to work. When these 4,000 individuals jump into cars, let's say 2,000 of them will drive, the other 2,000 will take public transportation. What's the effect of adding 2,000 cars on 2/28 between 7:00 AM and 8:00 AM or between 7:30 and 9:00 AM? At the same time when we have the high school traffic. So I'm saying, if we say to the public, well, the effect is going to be similar to the high school, they're going to say, oh, so you're going to make it even worse than what it is. Or if we're going to say, no, it's nowhere near that. it even worse than what it is. Or if we're going to say, no, it's nowhere near that. It's, it's going to make it easier for us to see it, instead of, it's just going to add one second. I do not believe in the one second.
So illuminate the impacts a bit more, and then I think we need to work on the conclusion as well.
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that.
Two points I wanted to touch on. Mike already talked about them, the decades to build. That will not solve the affordability and the housing issue. And again, that's what I heard council member promoting the action plan, because we are trying to solve the, the housing issue. And they've talked about the permitting, and how complicated the process, and how that is driving the cost of building. I, I believe that's something you guys have control over, to streamline it more than anyone else. Last thing, let's, let's not get married to any option. I, I have the feeling that there are many of us in this room, including myself and in the community, who, who are married to an option, something between zero and 4,000s. We, we are all somewhere between there. Paul is even more than that. Let's not get married to any of these options, and let's truly stay at an equal distance from them, and present City Council with accurate data that allows them to make that decision. At the end of the day, they will pay the price politically, and their relationship with their community, their neighbors. And you can see it in what, how the meeting went on Tuesday, and how the meeting went today, and all the responses they get. And I can see it when they were talking. You can see how tense they were. Let's all work to give them accurate data so they can make the right decision that will affect this city for the next, maybe 100 years.
Okay. How about I just go to that side? The south side. What do you got? Well, you can decide. Um, I, I wanted to make just a, a couple of statements, so not a lot of discussion. One thing is, I think I would like to be, touch on this topic at some future conversation, which is, how do I say this? So the whole idea, this goes back to the trees and a bunch of other things. But the whole idea with the urban growth boundary is to focus our growth behind a line that preserves the rural character and the trees on the other side of that line. And we've talked about town center doing the same thing for Sammamish, that we focus growth in town center to preserve other parts of towns, of, of the city. But I guess I'm not really, that's a nice story, but I don't think we should say that if it's not true. So in other words, if we build town center, but still, everybody who owns property outside of town center wants to build five-bedroom McMansions, and they can do it, we shouldn't represent that somehow town center magically solves that from not happening. It's still going to happen. And I think we just need to be, need to be careful about portraying that as an idea, if that's not real. And I'm not sure that I, in my mind, understand the connecting those dots. But I think we should be careful not to give people the idea that, fine, fine, build your 4,000, so that means that I'm not going to see all these trees cut down in the rest of the city. No, that's not actually what it means. So let's not represent that as being what it means.
Yeah, that was a discussion we were having early on. I think after talking to you, touching base with you.
Yeah, let's be careful about that.
Yep.
The other thing I would just say is, I'd encourage staff in particular to remember that you guys work on this, guys and gals work on this every day, and you're, you know, elbows deep in it, and things seem obvious and understanding, and it is all there. But for members of the community, they, you know, they don't, they don't even know what some of the words are. They don't. And it's hard for members of the community and people in Sammamish to get behind any of this when they don't have much to go on that will get them excited about what the outcome will be. And right now, this feels like a very technical conversation. And that is what's needed for solving the problem. But that's not what's needed for getting the community to be informed and either support or detract from the plan based on their understanding. Right now, I don't think a lot of people actually have an understanding what we're talking about, because we've all been talking numbers and statistics and form-based code and words that don't mean anything to most people in Sammamish. And so it's, it feels to me like we have a marketing problem, right? We, we need to have some way to market this to the community so that they can be excited. And then there will not be full support, but there may be a different level of support, or at least people will be making informed comments based on, you know, their perception of what they're going to get, without having to understand the number of square feet per parking stall and surface parking, and on and on and on. We'll never get there, and we don't need to. But right now, I don't think we've done, I hesitate to say that because it's not me doing it. But I don't feel like with the comments I've seen in here, in the agenda packet, here tonight, and other places, that people really actually understand what it is we're talking about. Because we're talking at a, at a technical level, not a, a community communication level.
It is, so this EIS process has been the most difficult. And I'm new to Washington, and new to this process. And it's so difficult to, like, initiate a process where you're identifying everything bad that can happen, all the impacts, without really, and examining on a technical level, you know, and trying to bring the public along on that. It's been a very, you know, difficult few months. So I totally understand that.
Well, one of the things that I suggested a long time ago, if you remember, Matt, was that is there, if there is any way to create some rendering? And then, I don't know if it was you or David, saying that, oh, if we, if we create the rendering, they think that that's exactly what we're going to. But that is going to solve some of these problems and concern that we're talking about numbers and all that. But if you show them something that at least conceptually, that goes a long way to sell the plan to the community.
We've restarted that conversation. Yeah.
Finally.
Yeah. Well, you know, some kind of overall picture.
It would really help.
I, I agree.
You can create a poster and sell it to the community and say, hang it on the wall.
Well, in the end, you can either spend your time fighting back against misperception, or you can be, or you can spend your time and energy creating a positive perception upfront. It's probably going to be the same amount of effort either way. And so I don't know. It's unfortunate because we don't talk about the real things, we talk about the unreal stuff.
That the expectation is exactly what they see, but, but you cut the pluses and minuses.
But if you don't give them anything, they assume the worst. If you don't tell people what you're doing, they assume it will be bad. That's the rule.
Right.
And so that's kind of where we are. We haven't done a great job of...
So you're saying that creating a rendering, that would be...
Figuring out a way to communicate with words, images, and messages that the layperson could get excited about.
That's what it is.
Yeah, yeah. Then...
There's probably cons.
Because if you don't do that, then they just assume that you're, you know, taking bribes and doing stuff under the table, and, right? Go read the comments. That's, people assume the worst if you don't tell them what you're doing. And that's, I think, a little bit of where we are. Anything else?
So, since you brought up, I have a couple of minor questions. If I look at my note where I see that. No, I lost it.
Should we extend?
Yeah, what?
Should we, or, no, I almost said 9:30.
Minor, minor.
Okay.
Minor.
Three minutes, or less.
The question was, David, you mentioned about the, what is the difference between mid-rise and urban mix? Or Jeff?
Yeah, so mid, we typically think of mid-rise as between four and I guess eight stories. So the upper limit of the urban mix allows 50 feet, so like four to five-story building, that would be mid-rise. And then in the urban core, 70 feet by right, and potentially up to 85 feet within some. So that's, that's kind of the mid-rise. And then like a three-story walk-up would, would be more like low-rise.
And David, you, in your presentation, both to the council, and you mentioned it again tonight, one of the objectives is to build low-rise construction type that is feasible. Feasible. Can you go over the feasibility? What is feasible to the developer, to the community, to what?
Yeah, this question was asked also on Tuesday, and it's to the developer.
And how they're going to determine that?
Whether or not they choose to build it.
I think what you're, David, what you mean is financially feasible, right?
Financially, it's, it goes back to what I'm saying. How, how do you guarantee?
So, well, we've been, we did some earlier modeling with Kidder Matthews to look at some housing types, three different housing types in town center. And, you know, the challenge right now is a lot of these, some of these housing types are, are not feasible right now, just because of broader economic conditions, not anything specific to Sammamish, assuming the code wasn't a barrier. But we've been also working with March, and basically modeling the impact of the affordability requirements, and looking at how to capture the, the increase development potential to provide more affordable housing. That's really one of the strategies that we're continuing to work through.
My last question, David, you mentioned about, a couple of times, about town center housing capacity. Do we have any magic number? What is it? What is it? Town center capacity?
The capacity is basically what the work we're doing on the EIS is. It's, it's the zoning. And in back in, back when, when the code was adopted in 2008, 2010, they reverse engineered the zoning capacity to only allow 2,000 units. And that's what Jeff was talking about earlier with regard to how the bonuses work, whether it's the Affordable Housing Bonus Pool, or the Transfer Development Rights Program. And they set the base allocated zoning at a certain amount, and then they set the, the max zoning at a certain amount. And then they allowed some additional units beyond the max zoning through TDRs. And if you do the math, it roughly adds up to 2,000 units. So that is how they got to 2,000 units. And it's, and it has been, I, you know, I, if, if I had a, a opportunity to be a fly on the wall in those conversations back then, my, my estimation is, is that they were trying to meet a lot of different objectives, and, and respond to a lot of different comments. And it was kind of a, if you read the plan, it even says in the plan that they're going to see how it goes, and they're going to, it says to revisit the plan when we reach a certain point. And we're at that point now. So that's one of the reasons why we're doing this.
So can I assume that the, the answer to that question is, the capacity of town center as far as housing is equal to 4,000?
Uh, no, I think that...
So maxing it out?
Getting, get, no, I think it actually would be more than that, if you, depending on the zoning. It really depends on how you zone it, and, and what you allow in terms of building heights, and in terms of how you calculate density, the type of code that you have in place.
Absolutely. I mean, we, we have run the capacity model, and we are somewhere in the neighborhood of 4,000. So, or at least demonstrated that under the current zoning, you can achieve that amount. But again, there's a lot of assumptions going to it.
Yeah. It's, it's dependent on phasing, and I think land assemblage, and, yeah, continued market volatility.
Okay. I will say, quite a bit of discussion, but good discussion. Appreciate everybody's participation, both commissioners and also David, Jeff, Audrey, Matt, thank you. Anything else outside of this for the, from staff for this evening?
On the long-term agenda, there's a, a meeting scheduled next week. We should be getting the packet out tomorrow. We're going to discuss impact fees. And then come back on August 7, and we'll continue this discussion and the impact fee discussion.
And you said that they may be paving next week, so we'll try to figure that out. But you might want to plan an extra five minutes when you're coming here next week, just in case.
If I'm right about that, I, I will include information in, in the email.
Okay. I think we can move to adjourn.
So moved. Second?
Moving second, then we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, no. Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.